Actually, I do have one using the same, the same style.
It's a good, it's a good.
Yeah, it is.
Neutral.
Yeah. You need to keep these, you need to keep these in your stuff, too, for you.
How we doing, sir?
Pretty good.
You need to keep these in your stuff, too.
Okay, sure. I just wanted to remind her, 155, we need a whole 155. Yeah, and she can make the motion or whatever. Sounds good. We'll catch up.
Do we have a quorum? Then, uh, then I, uh, just like this.
Yeah, she got me. She got that flow, so. Hit that. Hello?
Thanks, sir. How was it?
It's going.
Chair, y'all late, y'all getting fined. I'm telling y'all now, y'all know.
Yep.
He's ready.
It's 5:30. Like to call the Tuesday, April 8, 2025 Committee of the Whole Order. Please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Mr. Clerk, can you please take the role?
Yes, sir. Alderman Cox.
Present.
Alderman Gregory.
Here.
Alderman Williams.
Here.
Alderwoman Purchase.
Here.
Alderman Rockford.
Here.
Alderwoman Ettriano.
Here.
Alderman Carlson.
Here.
Alderwoman Conley.
Present.
Alderman Donlin.
Here.
Alderman Hanauer. Mr. Chairman, you have a quorum.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. I'll accept the motion for the approval of the March 25, 2025 Committee Meeting Minutes.
No move.
Second. Moving to second at all in favor?
Aye.
Madam Treasurer, would you please present your Treasurer's Report?
Thank you, Chair. The Treasurer's Report for the Corporate Fund for the Month of March. Beginning balance is $58,768,026. We took in total receipts of $11,174,331. We took and, we had total disbursements in the month of March totaling $11,411,740, which left the Corporate Fund ending balance in the month of Mar- of March at $58,530,617. The ending fund balance includes $10,323,663, which is the ending balance for the ARPA money. That concludes my report.
Mr. Chair, make a motion to accept the Treasurer's Report as submitted. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. I believe we have a presentation from Corporation Counsel, Mordock.
Not used to seeing you on that side.
Only during budget, usually.
You look taller.
So, last week, Alderwoman Purchase asked me to discuss the Open Meetings Act and our public comment rules, so I put together a brief presentation to touch on both. The Illinois Open Meetings Act applies to any meeting of this body. The City Council is comprised of 11 individuals. A quorum of the City Council is six, so these rules apply to whenever four or more of you are together. So, gathering of a majority of a quorum is a meeting for purposes of the Open Meetings Act. Before a meeting can be held, the body needs to post an agenda, needs to be posted at least 48 hours in advance. We do this on Friday before a City Council meeting and before a Committee of the Whole Meetings. Now, the agenda must include everything that's going to be, have final action taken, but we can discuss public business that's not on the agenda during our meetings, as long as we're not taking final action. So, you can think about our old business or our new business. We discuss city matters. We're not taking any action on that vote, so it does not need to be on the agenda. Public comment, which is why Alderwoman Purchase asked me to put this together, is required by the Open Meetings Act and subject to the rules established and recorded by the public body. The Illinois Attorney General routinely provides this quote to discuss the importance of, and the requirement of allowing, public comment at open meetings. Broadcasting public meetings is not required by the Open Meetings Act. The only time the city of Springfield is required to public, or to broadcast its meetings is if it's having a fully remote meeting pursuant to an emergency declaration. So, we have not had those since the COVID-19 pandemic and do not need to broadcast meetings unless we go back to a fully remote meeting. In a challenge that the city received earlier this year with the Attorney General's Office, the Attorney General reaffirmed this. In fact, the quote that the Attorney General provided was, because OMA does not require the City Council to broadcast its meetings, and because the City Council's public comment rules do not require the city to broadcast public comment either, it cannot violate OMA for the city to decline to include your public comments in any meeting broadcast. Now, the city chooses to do this, but it's not mandated, and in fact, there are many public bodies in Sangamon County that do not broadcast their public meetings. Now, public comment is a designated public forum, so it's not a traditional public forum like the proverbial town square, and it's not a non-public forum, which would be government property that's not used for speech at all. For example, my office is a non-public forum. You have to badge to get in. It's got employees working in, in spaces, and the general public is not allowed in there. Your City Council meetings have the City Council portion, which is a non-public forum. That's for you to engage in, in your debate and your discussion, and then we open it up to public comment, which is a designated public forum. Now, because it's a designated public forum, the government is limited in the restrictions that it can impose, and in fact, we can only impose reasonable time, place, and manner restrictions. And those restrictions need to be content neutral, they need to be narrowly tailored to serve a significant governmental interest, and the city needs to imply, needs to provide ample alternative channels of communication. Now, local, we as a municipality, we have a significant governmental interest in preserving order in our meetings. This has been held by nearly every United States Circuit Court of Appeals, and the Attorney General has reaffirmed this in its opinions. So, what has the City Council done? We have two sets of rules addressing public comments. We have our Rules of Procedure, which were adopted in 2007 and amended in 2020, and we have our Rules for Public Comment, which were adopted June 21, 2022. The City Council rules are the rules governing the entire, the entire proceedings. There are this booklet, I think you all have it. It's available on the City Clerk's website as well, but it governs all aspects of the meeting. It's, does not just pertain to public comment. The only section addressing public comment is Section 8, which is titled Citizens' Rights. Now, our, so we have our public comment rules from 2022, and then our City Council rules, and I'm going to be referring to both and walking you through what those rules currently state, and though, these are our time, place, and manner restrictions. So, City Council Rule 8.1 and 8.2 limit public comment to five minutes unless time is granted by the presiding officer. Our public comment rules, as written to the record, restrict public comment to five minutes per speaker. Our City Council rules say that remarks must be made to the council as a body, but then Rule 8.2 says questions need to be asked through the presiding officer. Our public comment rules state that, that speakers must address the presiding officer in, in their comments. So, we've typically allowed comments that address the council as a whole or the presiding officer. Our, our City Council rules say, again, no question should be asked except through the presiding officer, but then our public comment rules say that alderpersons, the mayor and staff are not required to answer any questions that are asked. And then both sets of rules say that the comments need to pertain to city business or items over which the City Council has control. City Council Rule 8.3 describes what is not allowed in our meetings, and, and it corresponds with public, public comment rules subsection B. So, our council rules prohibit any personal, impudent, slanderous remarks or becoming boisterous. Our prohibited conduct in the public comment rules provides more specificity. It prohibits profanity, vulgar language, or gestures. It prohibits insulting behavior, including racial attacks, personal slurs, name-calling, and allegations of personal wrongdoing, and also, it also prohibits intimidating behavior, including yelling, pounding the lectern, personal threats, or other disruptive behavior. Now, anybody who's, who's violating these rules can be gavelled by the presiding officer, and anybody who fails to abide by the presiding officer's request to follow the rules can then be removed from the meeting, subject to a majority vote of the City Council. Our council rules provide an alternative channel for communication that's, that allow for written comments to be provided to the City Clerk. Now, after these rules were adopted, the City Council created the position of Council Coordinator, and Council Coordinator can also accept these comments and distribute them to the City Council, to the City Council, which is often, which occurs regularly, so there are two avenues of communication. It can go through a City Clerk, or the Council Coordinator, or it can be sent to you directly. So, in enforcing the rules, there are two concurrent tracks that can be taken. One of them I, I just discussed. If there's disruption during the City Council meeting and the presiding officer is not being followed, then the City Council can take executive action by expelling a person through a majority vote. That's City Council Rule 8.3, that's Public Comment Rule Subsection C. In addition to that, the mayor, as chief executive officer of the city, is charged with enforcing its laws and ordinances, and that charge includes enforcing the rules even when the Rules of Procedure allow for a legislative mechanism for removal. And this is particularly important when action occurs that violates the rules that happens outside of the actual City Council meeting. For example, if the City Council has, has adjourned and there's offensive conduct, the mayor has the authority and indeed the duty to enforce these rules. Likewise, if occurrences occur not within, unbeknownst to the City Council, but a violation occurs, the mayor, again, has the authority to enforce these rules, and I think that the, the Hanover Park case makes that clear. So, this City Council is not without power to address, to address these issues. If the City Council does not like the rules that I just walked through, you can change it. This City Council was not the one to pass these rules. We have a new board. Some of you were on the council at the time, but if, if this City Council wants to change the rules, it can. But, in absence of that, the, the best way for the City Council to move forward is to follow its own rules, because when the City Council isn't following its rules, then we might allow five minutes for one person, and then five minutes and 20 seconds for somebody, and then six minutes for somebody, and then that leads to confusion. And so, if we say we're going to be five minutes for public comment, then cut it off at five minutes, and if that's not enough, then move it to six minutes. I mean, if the City Council wants more public comment and doesn't think that enough can be said in that, then it's acceptable to amend the rules, but where it leads to confusion is when we have different presiding officers applying different rules. And so, that's why I have advised to, to follow these rules. The same thing goes with questions. Sometimes people get up here and they ask a question, and they get stares, and then other times they ask a question and there's not an answer, but if, if an alderperson has a question, they may call up a director, and so the second person might get their questions answered, and a director might be brought up here to answer those questions, and then the first person, who might have had equally legitimate questions, but not anybody to ask those questions up around the council, would be sitting there going, hey, what about my questions? Those are legitimate, too. And so, if we want to allow questions, then we should have it in our rules and have some guidance with those questions. So, with that being said, I, I attempted to, oh, one, one additional item, and I'm going to go back, was Alderman Gregory last week. I misunderstood his question regarding the discipline that been imposed. I thought he wanted specifics, but in general terms, I know we've discussed there have been five letters that have gone out for discipline. Each of those letters have been through the, through the second track here, so each of those have been executive action taken by the mayor as her chief, as chief executive officer of the city. So, so that's to answer your question, Alderman Gregory, from yesterday, and with that, if there are any questions, I am happy to take them.
Alderman Williams?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have, I'll just limit it to two questions. The first is the who, and I'm talking about broadcasting and making decisions on if you're going to broadcast or broadcast public comments. When you say the city isn't required, so who's making that decision if we're going to do it? Is it the, the mayor and administration, or is it the City Council?
Right, right now, it is, it's the mayor's decision, and, and it's an executive action. Now, the way I read the, the Attorney General's opinion, that, that I had up here earlier, and I can bring it back up, but it, it does look like it would turn that the City Council's public comment rules could require the city to broadcast public comments, and then, and that might sway the Attorney General to have a different opinion as to whether or not the city could move through executive action.
Yeah. So, in, in my research and looking at all these things, that, that's one area where a lot of cities do it different. My second question is definitely detrimental based on size of the city. Some cities will say, you know, the public can speak, but they only can speak to items on the agenda that night. They just can't come up and talk about anything. It has to be something we're working on or dealing with, that issue has to be on that current agenda. Is there anything in here that addresses something like that?
Yes. So, our, our public comment rules, Rule 8.1, 8.4, 8.5 of the City Council rule, and then Rule, Rule, Subsection A5 of the Public Comment Rules, both state that, that the items need to be, that the public comment needs to be listed items, to items on the agenda or within the jurisdiction of the city. Now, what I can say is, since I've started as Corporation Counsel, I cannot think of a time where somebody has not been allowed to speak or has been gavelled for leaving an agenda item or an item within the jurisdiction of the city.
Okay, that's I have for right now, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Alderman. Alderwoman Purchase?
Thank you, Chair, and thank you, Mordock, for doing this presentation and just putting the clarifications out there, too, that we had concerns on, but what would be your ideal? I did just hear you say if it's five minutes and someone needs extra time, that maybe we should go up to six minutes, but you're recommending as our corporate counsel that if we need to change that, it needs to be straight across the board at an even six minutes, no matter what, because I think some people, there were legit reasons that they may have needed to go over, but like you just said, two other people that stopped could have said, well, can I talk for more than five minutes as well, too? And then that's where we had got from the audience, you guys need to get on one page.
I, yeah, and I think the problem comes up, to use, to, to use your quote, is, is who decides what, what's a legit reason? And, and so, that's why I say five minutes. That's the only way where it can consistently be applied, no matter what the context is, and I know it seems, it seems harsh, and it seems unfair, but it's the only way where the council knows what they're going to get, and the people who are up here know what they're going to get, because what if, because some people might think, hey, I'm, I'm really doing well up here, and I need additional time, and what I'm saying is important, and I should get seven minutes. But, but then, if, if the presiding officer agrees, then they get to go longer, but then maybe a different presiding officer would not agree, and that's where the confusion comes in.
Okay, and then I think my follow-up, and I think all of my colleagues can agree on this one, we've been seeing it where people yield their time over. Is there something in our rules for that, or is that just open to anybody to say, I want to stop my time and give it to someone else so that they can have more time? How do we look at that?
So, we don't have that mechanism in, in our council rules as far as reserving time and giving it to somebody else, and we have not allowed it.
What would be your recommendation? To put something in there that says we can't do it, we can do it, just so that it's being transparent across the board, and certain people are not doing it for certain people?
Sure, and you can't legislate every item, obviously, but that would add clarity if we do amend our rules to put that in there, that, 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 to the extent that saying public comment is strictly limited to five minutes per speaker, to the extent that that's not clear, that that means per individual speaking, and that you cannot yield additional time, we can specify subsection A1 of our Rules of Public Conduct.
Okay. Thank you. That was my other concern.
All right. Thank you, Alderwoman. So, I just, I'm going to jump in here. I don't know if this is allowed, but I'm doing it.
Yes.
I'm the chair, right? So, the precedent in, in this body has been that we are not allowed to yield time to somebody else. Is that correct? Okay. I just wanted to make sure I understood that right. Thank you. Alderman Carlson?
Thank you, Chair. Before I get to the question, Alderman Williams brought up a good point, and my question is, should pertain to city business? I mean, is that something that we could take a vote on eventually? If, if, and I, you know, I know the county board does it differently. I see we have a county board member here. I think they have, I think there's three minutes, non-business-related, and five minutes if you want to talk about city business. So, as a body, we could take a vote on that if we want to strictly limit public comment to city business?
Well, correct, right? So, right now-
How am I reading that?
Right now, our public comment rules vest that, vest that determination in the presiding officer, so the presiding officer can determine whether or not the comment is on an agenda item or within the jurisdiction.
Is determined or not to the city business.
Right. If you wanted to amend that, to do like the county does, that would take, that would take a vote of two-thirds of the City Council.
Okay. And then my second point, and, you know, I think it's good that you put this out there, and, 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 so we all see it on one document. Would it, would it help us and help the public if, when they sign up either on a hard copy sheet, or when they sign up to speak on a computer, and, and I think we've all seen this, you know, whether you're, you know, through a bank, or, or through whatever, that, hey, they have to check a box that they acknowledge all these rules and are going to, you know, conform to the rules that we lay out here as a City Council. Is that, is that something we could look at or do, and it might make it easier to, you know?
We, we can-
Everybody's understanding that, hey, we've acknowledged that the two or three pages of rules, and, and you're going, we're going to follow them.
So, we could do that? I think the City Council would be in a similar position now. We've passed the rules, so they have to follow them to engage in this, in speech in this designated public forum. So, if they, if they accept that and chose to violate them, it'd be, the City Council and the presiding officer would be in the, in the same position as they are now.
All right. Thank you, Chair.
You're welcome. Alderman Donlin?
Yeah, thank you, Chair, and Counselor, thank you very much for this presentation. I'm not one that likes to sit here and listen to department heads give long presentations. Yours was right to the point, and that is appreciated. Being one that has given Open Meetings Act trainings throughout the state, I like the way you just got to the points. This isn't very complicated. It seems, it actually seems extremely simple, the suggestion that how, you know, that since we do have a change of chairs, that we, you know, try to keep that in mind and try to keep it consistent, because we want the, the public to have consistency. I appreciate also that the city does broadcast these meetings on Channel 18, it's on YouTube. I would absolutely encourage that to continue without any interruption. I think that's, you know, time and time again, I've been contacted by citizens about things they see and hear. Not everybody can come down here for lots of reasons, and I just appreciate you all being supportive of that, as we have in the past, and the mayor and prior mayors before her, because it just gives the public an idea of what's going on downtown, and not everybody knows that. Media's changed quite dramatically over the last decades, so having those opportunities is important for the public, and again, thanks for the presentation. I don't have a question.
And Alderwoman Conley?
Thank you, Chair. My question, and, and thank you, Alderman Donlin, I just want to reiterate, I think, I don't think anyone here would disagree, we need to continue to broadcast our meetings and, and all the medias that we have. I, I agree, it's very important. It's, it is important that people who can't be here have access. I, I know I've got people watching right now, because they're going to send me messages after the meeting, but one question that, that didn't really get covered by your presentation, but has come up recently, is the QR codes. And then, and I did actually go back through our rules very carefully. We don't really have a limit on how people do their comments when it comes to, to something like that, but I understand the concern around QR codes, because, and that's not the instance in, in particular, but we always have to look for how can people maybe misuse, you know, the, their, their time. We'd hate to have someone come up and, and have a QR code be shared that's, that's maybe a website that's not either relevant to what they're saying or, or inappropriate. So, I'm wondering if this would be a clerk's office issue more than a council issue, if someone who wants to share a QR code could approach the clerk prior to the meeting just to share the code so we can affirm, you know, this is not a, and, you know, an inappropriate website, and we could even, I don't know, that would require us to designate what would be inappropriate, you know? We don't want to be sharing porn, right? We don't want to be sharing anything that's related to violence or, you know, incentivizing violence against someone else, but people do use QR codes. It's a really great way to get information out, so is that something that we as a council need to address, or is that a clerk?
The, the mayor has already met with the clerk, and we have a procedure in place now for the broadcast, so what, what we did on Monday was to work with the clerk's office to contact anybody who, who had signed up to speak already, to ask if they wanted anything projected, and to provide us with a copy of it. And, and then our, moving forward, our request to speak is going to have, do you have any visual aids? And then those visual aids can be emailed to the clerk's office, along with the-
Um, I'm not one that likes to sit here and listen to, uh, department heads give long presentations, yours was right to the point and that is appreciated. Being one that, uh, has given Open Meetings Act trainings throughout the state, um, I like the way you just got to the points. This isn't very complicated, it seems, it actually seems extremely simple, uh, the suggestion that how, you know, that since we do have a change of chairs, that we, uh, you know, try to keep that in mind and, and try to keep it consistent because we want the, the public to, uh, have consistency. Um, I appreciate also, uh, that the city does broadcast these meetings on channel eighteen, it's on YouTube, uh, I would absolutely encourage that to continue without any interruption. Um, I think that's, you know, time and time again, I've been contacted by citizens about things they see and hear. Not everybody can come down here for lots of reasons, and, uh, I just appreciate you all being supportive of that as we have in the past, and the mayor and prior mayors before her, because, uh, it just gives the public an idea of what's going on downtown. And not everybody knows that. Um, our media's changed quite, uh, dramatically over the last decades, so having those opportunities is important for the public. And again, thanks for the presentation, I don't have a question.
And Alderwoman Conley.
Thank you Chair. Um, my question, and, and thank you Alderman Donilon, I just wanna reiterate, I think, I don't think anyone here would disagree, we need to continue to broadcast our meetings and, and all the medias that we have. I, I agree, it's very important. It's, it is important that people who can't be here have access. I, I know I've got people watching right now, um, because they're gonna send me messages after the meeting. Um, but one question that, that didn't really get covered by your presentation, but has come up recently is the QR codes. Um, and then, and I did actually go back through our rules very carefully, we don't really have a limit on how people do their comments when it comes to, to something like that, but I understand the concern around QR codes because, um, and that's not the instance in, in particular, but we always have to look for how can people maybe misuse, you know, the, their, their time. Um, we'd hate to have someone come up and, and have a QR code be shared that's, that's maybe a website that's not either relevant to what they're saying or, or inappropriate. Um, so I'm wondering if this would be a clerk's office issue more than a council issue, if someone who wants to share a QR code could approach the clerk prior to the meeting just to share the code so we can affirm, you know, this is not a, and, you know, an inappropriate website, and we could even, I don't know, that would require us to, to designate what would be inappropriate, you know? We don't wanna be sharing porn, right? Uh, we don't wanna be sharing anything that's related to violence or, you know, incentivizing violence against someone else. Um, but people do use QR codes, it's a really great way to get information out, so is that something that we as a council need to address? Or is that a clerk, um-
The, the, the mayor has already met with the clerk and, uh, we have a procedure in place now for the broadcast, so what, what we did on Monday was to, uh, work with the clerk's office to contact anybody who, who had signed up to speak already, to ask if they wanted anything projected and to provide us with a copy of it. Um, and, and then our, moving forward, our request to speak is going to have, do you have any visual aids? Uh, and then those visual aids can be emailed to the clerk's office, um, along with the request to, to sign up to speak. That will then be transmitted to the office of communications, and what we will do is when you come up to present, uh, we will, we will be doing a split screen. So we'll have you and then your visual aid, uh, that, that you have requested. So I know QR codes, um, have been an issue. Uh, we've received one and we were able to review it, to look at where it went, and, and to now put it up as a part of our broadcast, and that will be a part of the public comment signup moving forward.
Okay, so I just, I, I wanna be clear, are we, are we establishing a criteria of what can be used? Because I, I just wanna be very careful that we're not, um, I, I think that needs to be very narrowly interpreted. So is that something that legal reviews or how does, how does that function?
So what we're doing is, is, uh, we're limiting it to, to visual aids, um, and the visual aids that are submitted need to abide by, uh, by our public comment rules.
Our code of conduct, okay.
So, uh, so they will be reviewed in conjunction with what would be deemed prohibited conduct and, um, and they need to follow our rules that are established.
Okay, and, and I would just, thank you for that, I, I appreciate that, I wanna make sure that everyone hears that. Um, I will also say, if, if in any instance, if a constituent of mine were to have a visual aid that, um, maybe didn't make it through the muster, or, you know, well, this isn't relevant to city business or something, um, and I will say this for anyone's constituents, you can always reach out to your council member to have, and, you know, just to have that conversation around what did I, this is what I wanted to share, um, you know, and, because I think these are conversations we should be having. Um, but I, I appreciate that, and I wanna make sure that, when will that change be initiated? Is that gonna be happening for next week's meeting?
I believe it's available for this meeting.
It was, okay, I didn't see it on the, we get copies of the signup sheets and I didn't have a chance to look at them closely, so.
We, we couldn't implement it on our signup sheet, so we reached out to everybody who signed up to speak, to ask if they had a visual aid and, and if they did and wanted it presented, uh, we asked them to submit it to us.
Well, good.
Okay, and then is that gonna be part of the signup though, moving forward?
Yes.
Okay, and then the other issue that came up was, um, accessibility, and I understand you had looked into, um, you know, accessibility concerns for people who come in to speak to council, can you kind of explain a little bit of that?
So, uh, so currently, um, I know that we, we broadcast our meetings, I know that the ci, uh, for people at home, for people who physically come into the meeting, uh, the city clerk has, uh, devices, um, that, that we can, that we, we have available for people who are hard of hearing, that we can use here in chambers. Um, and then certainly, uh, if those devices are inadequate for any way, the city would make reasonable accommodations for anybody who, uh, should request those and need those.
And is that something that maybe should be included with our signup? You know, do you, do you have any needs for accessibility accommodations? Do we, we don't really have that.
I'm sure, I'm sure we can have it, I don't, I don't know if we, if we have it posted here.
It's on our, it's on our site, if people need assistance, they can tell us and we'll get it ready for them.
And I think we could-
And where is it on our website? Or on the clerk's page, sorry?
And it's on the back, it's on your agenda too.
Last page.
I know it's on the last page of the, I, I guess what I'm trying to say is I wanna make sure that people are aware of where to find it, so.
And it's on our site, and it's on our, it's on the signup sheet now.
Okay. Okay, thank you very much, yep. Just wanna make sure everyone knows that that's, that's a consistent way to handle that, so, um, thank you clerk.
We've been busy this week.
Good, we like to keep you busy. Thank you very much, thank you Chair.
Thank you, um, Alderwoman Notriano.
Thank you Chair, uh, my question is regarding, um, your suggestions or advice to us regarding a, so let's say there is an issue happening in the room that is, uh, disrupting order. Let's say someone is talking in the audience and, um, you would like them to stop, uh, do you suggest that we warn them and then we lay out like sort of a, a tree of consequences if someone doesn't stop the behavior after the warning? Do you see where I'm going with that?
Sure, so, um, so if, if somebody's talking in the audience and say, um, it's, it's entering Ward One because they're close and, and the mayor doesn't have it, then, then the alterperson themselves should call a point of order to, to the presiding officer and ask the presiding officer to make a ruling if they're not. Um, and then, uh, the presiding officer should, should warn that person, and then if the conduct continues, there can be a motion, um, a motion to remove, uh, and, and this, this body can vote. I think as far as, um, as far as rules and violation, I think it would be well within the city council to, um, pass a rubric of, hey, if you, if you violate, if, if you use profanity, for example, right now, it's been discussed at city council, we've had people use profanity and they've not been broadcasted for thirty days. If the city council doesn't, does not like that, then they can, then they can pass a rule that says, if you use profanity, we're gonna ask you to sit down, your, your first offense. If you do it again, then it's a seven-day ban, and, and do a, a violation rubric, rubric like that. Um, our, our public library has a violations rubric, um, that's very detailed based on, based on violations, um, and I, and, and that's very clear, on what you do in the library, you might receive this many days suspension from the library. So that is within the city's council, almost like sentencing guidelines, but that's something that can be done.
That's wonderful, would you please share that with the council so we can think about, um, yeah, the rubric?
The, the, the library rubric, I, I will do that.
That'd be great. Um, and, and Chair, I would just like to let you know that the person in the back of the room, um, my right, uh, who is carrying on a conversation with someone sitting next to them, uh, is making it hard for me to pay attention.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm gonna ask the audience to please refrain from talking during the presentation and during the question-answer period. Thank you Alderwoman. Any other questions from council? All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mordock, thank you very much, I think that was, uh, very well done, appreciate it. All right, uh, Mr. Clerk, do we have any ordinances tabled remaining in committee?
None.
Very good, now for ordinances for committee consideration. Mr. Clerk, could you please read the ordinances for CWLP?
Yes sir. CWLP twenty twenty-five, one thirty-eight, an ordinance authorizing the purchase of two trucks from, uh, Althard Ford Sales, Inc., for third-party, uh, cooperative purchasing agreement with Sourcewell in the amount not to exceed two hundred and twenty-three thousand six hundred and fifty-six dollars for the Office of Public Utilities.
Motion for consent.
Second.
All those in favor?
Hi.
Discussion, Mr. Chairman.
Oh, miss, oh, thank you, thank you, Mr. Clerk, any discussion? Nope, Mr. Gregory.
So, um, is, is anybody from CWLP, what type of trucks is these? There's two of them for two hundred and twenty-three thousand dollars, what type of trucks is these? This gotta be some bad mamajamas.
Uh, they're dump trucks. Four-fifties. Dump trucks.
Just regular dump trucks?
Yeah, like they're smaller, I mean, they're not huge, huge ones, but they're, they're, they're F-one, F-four-fifties. Yeah.
All right.
Yeah, one's, uh, redlined, I believe, and then the other one, or, um, and the other ones for the new crew. As needed.
All right, thank you.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Twenty twenty-five, one thirty-nine, an ordinance authorizing the purchase of replacement parts to replenish an inventory for the Dahlman Unit Number Four for the Industrial Process Equipment LLC in the amount not to exceed seventy thousand nine hundred and four dollars and twenty-nine cents for the Office of Public Utilities.
Move to consent. Second.
It's been moved in second, is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Twenty twenty-five, one forty, an ordinance authorizing the purchase of repair parts for the Dahlman Plant Unit Number Four air preheater from, uh, Airvose, uh, Lindstrom, LLC in the amount not to exceed four hundred and eighty-eight thousand six hundred and forty-two dollars for the Office of Public Utilities.
Move to consent.
Second.
Moved in second, is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Public Works, twenty twenty-five, one forty-one, a resolution authorizing the execution of a letter of understanding between the City of Springfield and the State of Illinois milling and resurfacing on Ninth Street, Poria Road, from Madison Street to Sangamon Avenue for the Office of Public Works.
Move consent. Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Twenty twenty-five, one four-two, an ordinance annexing certain described pro, real property located at sixty-four oh five Canadian Cross Drive for the Office of Public Works.
Move consent. Second.
Moved in second, is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Twenty twenty-five, one forty-three, an ordinance authorizing the acceptance of execution grant number twenty-four dash FY twenty-four dash one zero one UCF, project number FA zero nine one seven dash twenty-three, from the Illinois Department of Natural Resources, USDA Forest Service through, through the eastern area, state private and tribal forestry in the amount of twenty-five thousand dollars for funding a tree planting program for the Office of Public Works.
Motion for consent.
Second.
Any discussion? I see, uh, Alderman Con, or Alderwoman Conley.
Thank you, yeah, I just wanna point out, I'll be voting present on this because it's my employer.
Got it.
Alderman Gregory?
Thank you, sir, uh, Chair. Uh, my only question is, is, is this a, is this combined with the, the tree grant that we had? Sorry, Mr. Foo, so have you walk up, and then while, while you're walking up, um, what are we gonna do with those two stumps out front? Are we gonna grind them ever? I walked up, it's, um, sort of what I do.
We are pacing ourselves on that, but they will all be removed, uh, before the really nice weather comes.
And did we cut them, was something wrong with them? I, I imagine they were diseased.
Uh, they are, uh, in the parlance of an arborist, they were girdled, which means they are large trees that are planted in a space between the foundation of the building and the sidewalk, which confines the, uh-
Growth.
The roots, and so you can see them sort of bubbling up there, that's called a girdle, and it means the tree's gonna die.
Thank you sir, appreciate you.
Uh, as far as this grant, uh, these are trees that are going to, since we know one eighty-six has been doing so much work, they've been, uh, building new structures, they've been rehabbing everything, and we've had in some places had to remove trees that were in the right of way, these will be to replace trees that are adjacent to, uh, school properties.
Okay, no, no, uh, what's them little balls trees? No gum ball trees, none of that good stuff?
I'm not even saying the word.
Aye, aye. Aye, thank you, sir, appreciate you.
Any further discussion? Motion is to add this ordinance to the consent agenda, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Twenty twenty-five, one forty-four, an ordinance authorizing a one-year renewal of a contract number PW twenty-one dash twenty, BLH Computers, Inc., for their collection and recycling and disposal of electronic waste for the amount not to exceed fifty thousand dollars for the Office of Public Works.
Consent. Second.
Alderman Donilon.
Yeah, thank you Chair, just, uh, sharing a short story, I, I had a conversation with my mother on the way here, and she described, she just got back from Florida, and she described that she's been spending, she'd kill me for saying this by the way, but, uh, been, uh, cleaning up the house, going through the office, getting rid of a lot of stuff, and she was talking about the, uh, large printer that's been in our office unused the last fifteen years, and I said, Mom, you know the city's got a program for this, as a matter of fact, we're voting on it tonight. She told me not to mess it up, so.
Thank you sir. Um, Alderwoman Notriano.
Thank you Chair, um, to, to that point, uh, whenever I saw this come across, I thought it would be a good time to remind everyone that, um, this is part of our, uh, city electronics recycling program that's open to all residents and area folks. Uh, you can drop off your printers and such to eighteen thirty-two Adalai Stevenson Drive, their regular hours are Monday through Friday, eight AM to five thirty, and Saturday, ten AM to five thirty, and, um, there are a few items, uh, and you can find this all on the Public Works website under recycling, there are a few items that are limited, so it's, uh, you have to live in Springfield and you can only submit three of these items for recycling in a year, and those are, uh, big old-timey TVs and LCD TVs and monitors, so.
All right.
We, we take a lot of stuff, so I hope to never see another flat-screen TV in an alley.
Great, thank you.
Good luck with that one.
Any further discussion? Uh, the motion is to add this to the consent agenda, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Uh, motion passes.
Twenty twenty-
I'm sorry.
Twenty twenty-five, one forty-five, an ordinance authorizing the execution of an intergovernmental agreement with the Springfield Township and the City of Springfield Road improvements to East Camp Sangamo Road in the amount not to exceed seventy-three thousand six hundred seventy-seven dollars eighty-nine cents for the Office of Public Works.
Move to consent. Second.
It's been moved in second, is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Twenty twenty-five, one forty-six, an ordinance accepting low bid and authorizing the execution of a contract number PW twenty-five dash oh-two dash sixty-three with Kenny Contractors, Inc., for the twenty-six, twenty-twenty-six concrete patching program in the amount not to exceed one million ninety-six thousand eight hundred and ninety-one dollars and seventy-five cents for the Office of Public Works.
Motion for consent. Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion for, to adopt amendment number one.
Second.
It's been moved in second to adopt the amendment number one? Any discussion?
So somebody please explain that.
Yeah, I'll, I, I can explain that, uh, we, we had concrete patching and this is actually for our sidewalk program, so it's going to be, uh, utilized for sidewalks.
Thank you.
Any further discussion on the amendment? All those in favor of the amendment?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? All right, the amendment is adopted.
Motion for consent has amended. Second.
Moved in second, is there any further discussion? Uh, Mr. Gregory, Alderman Gregory?
I, I just want to, and, 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 you know, I'll say that one of my constituents in, in my ward, um, through his disruption talks, he, he stays on me about this, um, this particular program and, and making sure that we have, um, minorities on the job and, and things of that nature, I think that's important, um, and, and this is definitely one of those that he, he definitely, uh, has bit my ear for some time about, so, um, I just wanna make that, you know, um, a priority, something, something that they look into and, um, the last contractor did, did, did a good job, I did see some minorities on the, on the job, so I hope that, that they continue this with Kenley, thank you.
Thank you, any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Twenty twenty-five, one forty-seven, an ordinance authorizing lowest responsible bid and authorizing execution of contract PW twenty-five oh-two dash sixty-two with Truman L. Flatt and Sons Company, uh, to furnish construction on the FY twenty-twenty-six by two must overlay program from the amount not to exceed seven million four hundred and twenty-six thousand twenty-seven, two hundred and seventeen dollars and twenty-five cents for the Office of Public Works.
Move to consent. Second. Second.
Moved in second, is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Twenty twenty, uh, general city business, twenty twenty-five, one forty-eight, an ordinance to increase the number of Class AA licenses by one for Foxy Fly LLC DBA fluid for the business located at three nineteen East Jefferson Street.
Motion for consent. Second.
Moved in second, is there any discussion? Alderwoman Purchase.
Clark, I will be a present.
Okay.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Opposed? Motion passes.
2025-149, an ordinance authorizing the purchase of contract number FD 23-05-39 for the purchase of 11 Scott self-contained breathing apparatus and the seven air packs from the Municipal Emergency Services, Inc., for the Springfield Fire Department for the total amount not to exceed $131,937.78.
Motion for consent? Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed? Motion passes.
2025-150, an ordinance accepting a quote number 3039417 and authorizing the purchase of 18 Motorola radio equipment in service from Motorola Solutions for the amount not to exceed $140,238.66 for the Springfield Fire Department.
Motion for consent?
Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed? Motion passes.
2025-151, an ordinance authorizing acceptance and execution of the 2023 Burn Justice Assistant Grant from the U.S. Department of Justice Bureau of Justice Assistance in the amount of $102,523 and authorizes supplemental appropriation of the grant funds for the Springfield Police Department.
Motion for consent?
Moved in second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed? Motion passes.
2025-152, an ordinance authorizing acceptance of execution of the 2024 Jane Byrne Justice Assistance Grant from the U.S. Department of Justice Bureau of Justice Assistance in the amount of $121,391, authorizing a supplemental appropriation of the grant funds and authorizing execution of memorandum of understanding with the Sangamo County, Illinois for the Springfield Police Department.
Motion for consent?
Moved in second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed? Motion passes.
2025-153, an ordinance approving the agreement between the City of Springfield and Ace Sign Company.
Motion for consent?
Move to debate? Second.
All right, Alderwoman Conley.
Thank you. And I just, did we have a second? I'm sorry, is it debate?
Second.
Okay, yeah, I just wanted to be sure.
Who's the second? I'm sorry.
We got comments from Steven Simpson Black, who had signed up originally to speak on this tonight. Do we have someone from Ace here? Just because some of the comments and questions he brought forward, two kind of basic ones that I think were good comments. I've also had a constituent reach out to me with concerns about, you know, how the benches are maintained, and, you know, sometimes some of them can look a little rough. There's one in my ward that sometimes it looks like someone runs into it a couple of times with their car. But for Ace, the two questions were, first of all, to prioritize removing benches, where, actually, this isn't, I guess it's Ace and the city, but prioritize removing benches from places where the buses don't stop. So that people don't, you know, they associate stops with those buses even almost more than the signs. So if that could be a priority for Ace, to make sure that those are removed as soon as possible, appreciate that. And then the other, the other question was to also prioritize placing these buses, these benches, and with maybe enhanced access at places where we have very busy bus stops. I know I had, a bench was put in my ward, and it was just placed in the middle of the grass. There was no way for anyone to access it without walking through, you know, walking through the grass in a spot that gets kind of muddy. You know, as long as, I think it's important to make sure that we're ensuring the integrity that people can get to the benches, they can sit there, they can be comfortable, wait for the buses, and feel comfortable with that. So if we could just...
Yeah, a couple of things. I've shared the letter.
Okay, okay, great. Thank you.
Keith Haines is here from Ace Sign Company to address any questions.
You didn't seem to be shaking your head no at me, so I appreciate hearing from you. Thank you.
In fact, Alderwoman, those are priorities of ours as well, and we have attempted to maintain those goals, if I will. We do have access to an SMTD map, which I understand they change when they change their routes and bus stops. So we do try to keep up on that. There may be times when we've dropped the ball or failed, but we do try to keep up on that. And our priority, of course, is to put primarily the benches at the most active visible sites available. So we're in complete agreement with the comments, and they have been our goals for the last 30 to 40 years that we have had the bench contract.
Thank you for that. And then can I just ask, if someone does have concerns about a bench's condition, who should they contact?
They should contact me at Ace. My name's Keith Haines.
Thank you for that.
Yep. We do get people referred to us from time to time, either from SMTD or somewhere else. And they'll call, and we'll discuss it, and see if we can't take care of the situation.
Thank you very much. And what's the schedule for replacing benches, maybe that have gotten older, and...
Yes. We have quite an issue with that. Our older benches have concrete legs and wooden backs, and they do deteriorate with time. So far, we have replaced over 60 of those benches, and will continue to do so. Obviously, we try to keep the old-style benches out as long as we can because we can't afford, frankly, to replace them all at once. So we are phasing in the new-style benches, which are aluminum. They're much more durable. And each of those benches costs us about $1,500 to fabricate and install.
How, do you know how many benches we have?
We have about 160 benches out right now.
Oh, right. Sorry, yes. Thank you very much. Okay, thank you for your answers.
Sure.
Absolutely.
Anything further, Alderwoman Conley?
No, thank you, Chair.
All right, thank you. Alderman Rockford.
Yeah, so I think this is towards, gonna be the question towards Corporation Council, but is there going to be any regulations pertaining to political signs on these benches? And the concern is that we can have a bus bench with the political sign on it. I'm not allowed to bring my sign up and post it next to it because it's on city property. So my question is, is there...
So, so right now, there's nothing in the contract that would prohibit political advertising on these benches? If that's a provision that the council is interested in introducing or would like to negotiate with Ace, I would need to look into it to make sure that that is a restriction that we're allowed to do under the First Amendment to include this in the contract, but that's something that I'm willing to do this week, and I'll be able to address it with the city council by the end of the week.
Okay. And also, per contract, it says we get a minimum payment of $8,000 per year. Does that go up with signage?
The way the contract has been worded and is worded is you're guaranteed a minimum of $8,000 regardless of how much revenue is brought into Ace.
Okay. Do we, does it exceed $8,000?
Yes. In fact, over the last nine years, we've exceeded that amount seven times.
Okay. Perfect. Thank you very much. Thanks, Chair.
Thank you. Where we, Alderman?
Williams.
Williams, thank you. Got a long list on here tonight.
Yeah, no problem. Thank you. Appreciate you for coming in. And I think this has been a hot one for me because of political signs. But I'll start with corporate counsel. So if we got concerns about people's, you know, free speech, my biggest issue is that's our right of way. But so is right out front, all that grass out front, where the trees that was just referred to. So is Lincoln Library. So is every lot that's empty that the city owns in the city. But we're not allowed. But he's allowed to put political signage on the benches in the right of way. We need to either say no political signage. He still has businesses. He still has all kinds of advertisement. If not, do PSAs, public service announcements, you know, for the city. But he should not, and I'm saying he, do you own the benches, sir?
No, sir, I do not.
SMTD?
I simply work for Ace. I do not own the benches.
Does Ace own the building, the benches?
Yes.
Okay, so between Ace, SMTD, and the city, we have got to get this straight. Because if not, if you are allowing them to put them on the right of way, then they can go in my empty lots. They can go anywhere that the city owns property. And if we're not going to enforce it fair for everybody, we shouldn't be doing it. You're concerned about them having the rights, then I'm concerned about all these rights that we restrict in other areas. The best way to solve this is to say no political signage on any benches. They can put their signs in the yard above or across the sidewalk from the bench or something if they want to put a sign there. But, or we should treat it just like we treat our, the billboards. We don't let billboards, you know, just be on the right of ways either. This right-of-way thing has gotten out of control. One or two people buy up the whole city, and it makes it unfair to opponents, you know, and other people who are in it. It gives people advantages. And we say to the other, the opponents are, okay, you got the benches, but your opponent can't put nothing there. But it's still a political sign. So if he can put his on that, in that right-of-way, so can the people running against him. He's just making money. He don't care what's on him, probably. But I'm telling you, when it's political, you gotta be concerned for everybody's freedom of speech, and everybody's right. Because what you're telling is, one, yes, you can put it there, and you're telling the other, you can't. That's not fair. And I think that's why I put it on debate. And I have several other issues. Some of them are not really going to be Ace. They're going to be SMTD because I have same thing. I don't know if you care, the overheads. But with the poor people there that use the bus, we probably got two or three. But the further west I go, people who got cars that don't even catch the damn bus, and I bet you, your data shows the difference, they don't, and you don't have no control. That's why I said some of this is SMD, some of it, most of it is us for not doing a good job regulating and controlling where we're going to have political signage. You should not mess with the opponents of us or anybody else who decides to run for office, and the other person gets to put the sign there, but they can't. That's not right. We shouldn't have any of this stuff on our right-of-ways, and we'll be fine. How do we change that to make their contract says we can't have political signage?
So here's my concern. Right now, the way we regulate political signs is we treat them as temporary signs, and we don't allow temporary signs in the right-of-way. And that's a manner of speech. But if we, if we look to telling an entity or telling a person, you cannot talk about, you cannot have political speech, you cannot have this content on your advertisement, then we're moving beyond content neutral, and we're starting to have content-based restrictions. And so I want to make sure that we can include that in a private contract with an advertiser to prohibit them from engaging in certain types of speech as opposed to using temporary signs, or using a manner restriction on temporary signs that I don't care if you've got a neighborhood yard sale, if you've got, if you've got signs pointing to your church's festival, or if it's a political sign, we regulate all temporary signs the same. So that, I want to make sure...
But you really don't, because this is not about temporary signs. This is about location. So I'll give you an example. So if you want to leave it like this, you just opened it up for the city lots that we own. Put your sign there, right?
If I, if I may, we're allowed by contract only to put benches by bus stops. So if there's not a bus stop there, there should not be a bench.
On the onset, it's not just your problem, because SMTD changes. I got in my ward where lots have been changed, I mean, routes have been changed. The bench is still there. And you guys have still put something on it.
If you're aware of that situation, I would appreciate knowing it, and we will look into it right away. When the Mass Transit District changed their routing significantly several years ago, we, as part of our responsibility under the contract, had to move over 75 benches. And that was not cheap. And we did that at our own company expense, of course, because we had to have the benches located by stops. And if there was a bench by an area that used to be a stop that is no longer a stop, I definitely want to know. I check the SMTD maps occasionally, once a month or so, and try to determine if any of our locations are no longer bus stops. But to be perfectly honest, I could have missed some. There's no question. So if you know a location where there is a bench and there is no stop there, please let me know. We want to address that.
I'll share the information. But I'm back to the original premise of my objection, is everybody has to be treated the same. You can't make a difference because it's policy. This policy can't make a difference that splits it up. Everybody has to be treated the same. You can't say, I'm gonna let them because they can afford, let him make money and control, and I'm also saying, even if I lose on this, there's subcontracting going on where the businesses will pull back and allow their political friend to put their name on it. That should not be allowed by our contract. I mean, we have to have some say on some of this, but the easy way out of it, corporate counsel, is just don't do political signage. You know, everything else is still going on, so it's not really blocking anybody's freedom of speech. There's plenty of yards. There's plenty of lots digging. But we got to do it one way or the other, either for everybody or nobody. And that's what my amendment's gonna be about, and that's what I'm asking you guys to take a hard look at. Because right now, it's some unfair ways, the way Ace is making their money off of the benches. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. Alderwoman Nottriano.
Thank you, Chair. So my concern with the contract is, in attachment A, it's pretty specific about, you know, the benches have to be made by a Springfield business, and it says what they should look like. And I'm concerned that that might limit us from making improvements and adding, instead of just basic benches, creating shelters like Alderman Williams was referring to. So I would just like, I don't know, I guess if you can answer now, or you want to take a look at it. But I would just like for us to, to make sure that this is flexible enough for us to, like, upgrade and bring into, modernize the bus stops with, to turn them from just benches to shelters. And also, I, I think maybe it's something we should consider that using the revenue from this agreement to put back into investing in modernizing these, these bus stops to make sure that, you know, there, there are shelters provided for people to keep them, protect them from the elements and things like that. I was at a meeting last night where one of the community members told me that if you look at the data on canceled medical appointments, you see a huge noticeable spike in canceled medical appointments on days when it rains. So I just, yeah. Making shelters is something that's really important to me, and I think should be important to the city, and I want to make sure the contract doesn't hinder us in any way. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Donlin.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Haines, just to be clear, I want to make sure I understand how the benches and the shelters work, and thanks, Alderman Williams, for bringing up the shelters. You know, a number of individuals utilize throughout the city, utilize SMTD and their services. You know, I see it on a daily basis on West Washington in particular, and it's a wind tunnel there, and shelters are appreciated. But Ace owns the benches. You've said that very clearly.
Yes, sir.
The shelters, that, the shelters, who puts those up around the benches?
Mass Transit District.
Mass Transit. So it's the, it's the Mass Transit, Transit District that is a taxing district that has funds for this type of purpose that's responsible. So if I have an issue, and I do, I should bring it to SMTD, not you.
Regarding shelters, yes, sir. Regarding the benches, it would be me.
And I've seen the shelters with the solar setups on them.
I'm assuming they were given grants for those things. I don't know. But we do communicate with SMTD. As I said, I periodically check their route maps to see if any locations have changed. I can't tell you that I'm 100% accurate on that. There are some that may have fallen through, and I would love to know because we'll get them relocated to a proper stop.
Well, I, again, Alderman, I appreciate the question, and Mr. Shuffle's a reasonable, the executive director, he's a reasonable person, and obviously, if the funds are there, maybe we can get some of these up that need to be up because, man, there's nothing, nothing worse than, as you're alluding to, that went 28 degrees this morning. He would have thunk it. So, anyway, thank you.
All right, thank you, Alderman. Alderwoman Purchase.
Thank you, Chair. Keith, how you doing?
Good. How are you?
You taking a lot of questions tonight. You doing a good job.
This is, this is not new to me, unfortunately, but...
Well, I'm glad you're here to answer them all. So going back to my colleague, Alderman Williams, I know that it has been a hot-button topic on the political signs. Now, we know of one person who bought up all the benches, and I'm the opposite side, so I was afforded the opportunity too to be able to come to you all. But I think I'm real big on education, and everybody may not know how to get in contact with you, or what is the timeframe for you to come in to purchase the bench, to have a sign up on there?
Sure.
How long do you keep the signs up on the bench for? What is the contract? And I also heard something that Alderman Williams just said too, if a business already has their sign up there, but we're all up for election, and we want to come in. He said how a business may remove their sign to allow one of us to have our signs up on the bench. So maybe if you can go a little bit through that, that may help, because I heard him say he's bringing an amendment forward, and just making sure everyone around the horseshoe understands that you are open to everyone coming. And I don't think we should hinder if a person could purchase a lot of benches because someone may not be able to afford to do all of the same.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, Alderwoman. There's a lot there, and I'll try to address it as best I can. The bus bench program that I administer is very much like a jigsaw puzzle. And we have people that have rented benches from us for 30 years or more. Many times, if they get on the bench, they do not leave. Oftentimes, we will have people that will leave a bench site, and that opens up to some other customer that might want to obtain that bench location for advertising purposes. But it's clearly a juggling act on our part, trying to find locations to put benches, trying to get benches available for those who call us and want them. We do take them on a first-come, first-served basis. I pride myself on trying to be fair and reasonable about things. And frankly, that's how I lasted in city government 30 years, which was my previous life. But we're trying to accommodate the requests and the needs from people that they have. At the same time, we're having to balance that with locations that are available for us and what we can do to put benches out. And I continually look for new locations for benches because we have the need there. We have people that have called us for years wanting benches, and the benches they want are occupied by someone who has first right of refusal on that bench. And I can't just kick them off the bench.
So Keith, hearing you say that, and I could hear it in Alder... So Keith, um, hearing you say that, and I could hear it in Alderman Williams' voice too, that he's very intentional about his, uh, amendment, is there any wiggle room for your contracts, because that may be an issue if you have, all of us are up in two years, and you have some of us who may want to utilize your service?
Mm-hmm.
But then you have a company that probably has not removed their sign for X amount of, uh, days or months. Is there some type of wiggle room so that his amendment doesn't take away from even us having that opportunity? I think this would be very important for him to hear.
Sure. Well, to be frank with you, I have no idea on the dollar side of things. I just admini- administer the puzzle piece.
No, not the dollar part, the contract and the time allotment. So say, Laquisha Construction Company has utilized this bench downtown for three years, but now Alderman Gregory is running for office, and I've utilized it this whole time. Is there some way for you to figure out availability during that time for the political arena? Because when, if it's available in one part of town but not available on the other part, I could see his amendment still coming forward to kill it all.
Sure. Well, I, I'm not sure how to address it exactly, other than to say that if an Alderman or anyone else, uh, wants a bench, uh, and it's already occupied by someone, it's not my involvement to deal with that individual, to see what they're willing to do. That is not my call.
But, okay, so I just want to a- ask my question one more time, to make sure I'm asking it correctly. Is there some room for you to go back to ACE and your board and ask them about the contract period of when companies have their sign on the, the bus bench? Just like, for an example, if I'm running from January to April, that's when I'm gonna contract with you, right?
Right.
I'm not gonna leave my, my Alderwoman sign on your bench for the whole two, two to four years.
You're welcome to, but.
I bet. But that, we see how it's a timeframe?
Yes.
I, I, I would strongly encourage you to talk to, um, ACE sign about that, knowing that amendment may be coming forward to not e- to prevent us from even being able to have that opportunity with you.
Okay. I, I'm not sure I completely understand the question. I never finished first in my class. So if possible, may we talk about it at a, outside of here, so I understand exactly what you're saying, and we will certainly look at addressing it.
And let me ask Alderman Williams, am I asking, are you understanding what I'm asking?
Yeah.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure before I call you in the morning.
You're more than welcome to participate in the call as well. I just want to make sure I understand exactly what you're asking me, so I can get you the proper answer.
I got you, don't worry. I know how to come find you.
Yes, ma'am, you do.
Thank you, Chair.
Good. Um, thank you, Alderman Gregory.
Thank you. Um, this has been a fruitful, thank you, um, Mr. Keith, is that your name?
Yes, sir.
All right, I wanna, I wanna have, I wanna have, what, what's your name? I want to have it right now.
Last name's Haynes, but I go by Keith as well.
Mr. Haynes, thank you for coming with the presentation, I appreciate you.
Yes, sir.
Um, Mr. Mr. Maradot, Corporation Counsel, I think we, we gotta do one of two things. I, I, I hear, um, my Alder brothers on, on what their concerns are with these benches, and, and there, there has been some perceived or, or actual unfairness with them, um, and, and, and signs and things of that nature. So I, 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 I think we either have to, um, limit that, make it fair, fifty-fifty, um, which is hard, right? Or, or we have to allow political signs next to those benches. Um, so I, I would like to prepare two amendments. The one that Roy was talking about, I would like you to prepare two of them. Uh, the one, um, that excludes political language on those bus benches. And if your ruling or your, your research says that we cannot do that, then I would like a ordinance coming forth in the, in, in, in the future, um, that would allow political signs in our right-of-ways. Um, and we'll, we'll work on some language as far as how far away from those bus benches. Not all of our right-of-ways, not, not all of our city lots, but next to those bus benches to, to bring some fairness and, and, um, transparency to it, so. But we can talk further, um, um, we can talk more about that, um, offline. But I will say, you know, for me, this is a crazy situation. Here we are, have a business, a small business, providing, doing a great job with bus seats throughout our city.
Yeah, it's small.
And to me, that's the bus company's responsibility. Then we don't have those problems. You know, we don't have this type of thing. How lo- how long is this, when did we make this contract?
Um, I don't, I, I don't have one of the original ones.
Thank you, Mr. Rockford. So, so, you know, a- a- and, you know, um, like everyone, we, we have some spots. I have senior citizens that, that, that have to wait out in the rain, um, and I called the bus company, this ain't your fault, but I called the bus company, I said, hey, I, you know, um, my seniors are waiting on the bus on Taylor, and during the rain. Ah, we ain't got no right-of-way to put it there.
Yeah.
So, so my people gotta sit in the rain against the bus, you know, at a, at a, in front of a senior citizen place. And I'm not sure if they put one si- of their sense, but I know we was, we was talking about right-of-way issues.
Yeah. Unfortunately, the rain issue is something that can only be addressed by the shelters.
Absolutely.
Because having a bench there wouldn't do any good to that issue.
Yeah, 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 absolutely, absolutely. You're absolutely correct in that. So I, I just think that, that, you know, some of this conversation, and some of these conversations that we have as far as just shelters and, um, you know, I, I wish the bus company handled the bus seats altogether, and then we wouldn't have the, you know, um, I think political, um, signs. Hey, hey, we, we can hang one off the side of this building, you know, a- and they ride around with a bus, a bus, you know, all the, over the city, and they're a governmental body as well. So, um, I thank you for your time. Um, either way, we'll, we'll come back next week and, and, and take a vote on this. Um, but I definitely want you to know that my comments, and I, I, I can probably speak for my other, uh, colleagues, are not to, to bash you personally. We know you're a worker. We, we, we get it, that, that you're doing a, a, a job, and we appreciate you, sir. We just, I just wanted to share these concerns as well as my colleagues. Thank you.
ACE is a locally-owned business.
Absolutely.
We've had this contract for thirty to forty years. Um, and ACE has always, as a family business, we have prided ourselves on trying to serve the community in different ways.
We're pretty sure.
We participated in the arts quite a bit. In fact, we had a joint prog- uh, program with them where we put local artists on bench panels. Or, uh, two rounds, in fact. I think it was a total of, uh, eight years.
Well, I want to be very, very clear, you know, my, my comments are not questioning the, the work or the.
Yes, sir.
Um, of ACE, uh, as a small business in our community, but more so our process to keep things fair.
Yes, sir, I understand.
Um, within our city. So I appreciate you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. Um, Alderwoman, Connolly.
Thank you, Chair. And my apologies, I forgot to get my other question out. Um, first of all, I, and since you mentioned the, the art on the benches.
Yes, ma'am.
That was a beautiful campaign. Um, I actually have a friend whose mother's art was featured on a bench near Lincoln Park, and it was, it was a lot of fun to drive around and see those.
Very cool, yes.
Yes, it was great. And, um, but my other question I wanted to ask you about was the, um, the public service messages, because you, that's part of this, this proposal, is that you're gonna be furnishing, um, fifty standard reverse side panels for public service messages from city departments. And can you just kind of explain a little bit more about what that is? Because I think that's really, I, I find it very encouraging to, to have another way for people to get, um, public service messages out. It's something that I've asked for with electronic billboards.
Okay.
I- in my ward. So can you just kind of explain what you're gonna be doing there?
Sure. If you're referring to the second point about benches are made, oh, no, I'm sorry.
No, it's, it's on the next page, actually.
Okay.
The sign company will, and it says furnish fifty standard reverse side panels for public service messages from the city departments.
You're right, yes. We will furnish them at the city's request, and in fact, during this current ten-year contract, which is about to end, um, we actually sought out, uh, the city and asked them if we could work with, um, Crime Stoppers. And as a result, we put up, I think, forty-five or fifty Crime Stoppers panels, of course, free, um, throughout the community as part of that project. And we are willing and have been willing to work with the city to, uh, offer that service at any time.
I, I think that's fabulous. I know, I s- I noticed, um, I was parked next to one of our, our fire trucks re- the other day, and they had a QR code, you know, join us with a, a link to the, again, QR codes, with a link to the application. But, um, you know, police and fire are both trying, you know, with their outreach, with their recruitment, um, to get, you know, recruit our local community members.
Sure.
To be part of our, our team, um, especially, you know, emphasizing it, our minorities, our women, women people. So, um, I, I'm very excited to see this in here. I think it's a great addition, and, um, just if we could just make sure that our city departments are aware of this.
Absolutely, in fact.
And I, that's not your job. No, I, you, I think it's fabulous you're offering. I just want to make sure that the city departments know that this is, this is something that ACE is offering to us. Um, and again, that's, that's part of the community that you're bringing, and I appreciate that very much.
Absolutely. We feel very strongly about it being a family, local family business.
Thank you for that.
And we have had discussions already with the purchasing agent about that very possibility, and we'll continue to pursue that.
That's wonderful. Thank you very much.
Absolutely.
Because we've got some big things coming in Springfield, you know, with the, um, perhaps sixty-six festivals, and, you know, um, and just, yeah, just a lot of public service issues that it'd be great to get those out. But thank you for including that in your, in your contract.
Absolutely.
All right, thank you.
Chair.
Alderwoman, Purchase.
Thank you, Chair. Sorry for the second go-round.
Sure, all right.
Keith, um, I think this is very, very pertinent to this conversation. So, um, you said earlier that ACE sign owns the benches, but SMTD does the shelter and the covers?
That's correct.
Do you all work together to, for them to inform you all where they're putting those shelters at?
Um, it, there, uh, sometimes.
Okay.
Um, if, if there's a bench at that location, then of course we would like them to notify us, and generally they have. Because once the shelter goes in, there's no reason for the bench to be there. So we will look for an alternate site for the bench.
And I think it's so important, but sometimes I know silos get in the way where we don't communicate with each other.
Yes.
Alderman Gregory brought up a point that raised my antennas, when he said if, due to, uh, the legal reasons that we can't remove the political signs, you just clarified. So if a shelter gets put up, that bench gets removed, because it would be hard for somebody to see the, the graphics on the front and back, correct?
Yes, ma'am, yep.
So I wanted to make sure that that was something educational for everybody. And then the same thing, that covers now the question that Alderman Gregory brought up. He said if the political signs can be put on the benches, then we should allow for anyone that's running as, as far as like opponents, to be able to put their signs next to the, um, bench and Corporation Counsel. I would want you to really look at that, and I think it'd have to be some intentional, like, we have to be very intentional with the size that you can have. You can't just put a big large four-by-four standing next to a bench, and it can block people's sight from driving to turn a corner. So I think a lot of effort might have to be put into that if we can't do the First Amendment that Alderman Williams wants to bring forward.
I will say, before we place a bench, I go out and inspect the site, and I have to determine that there will still be visibility available for pedestrians as well as vehi- vehicular traffic. I have to determine where the right-of-way line is, so that I know we're putting it on public property, because those are conditions we're limited to. So.
No, I think, Keith, this doesn't have more so to do with you, is if we allow for the signs to come to be next to your bench.
Yes, ma'am.
How big is that sign, and where can it be placed at around there?
I g- I get that, yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, um, Alderman Rockford.
Yeah, likewise, Keith. I apologize for coming back around, but you, you mentioned that you folks have been doing this for thirty to forty years.
Yes, sir.
Uh, Corporation Counsel, can you tell me how long the city of Springfield has owned these, these benches?
Yeah.
Or the, you know, or the right of, we've, we've been given right-of-way, or the, the right for the benches to be put on city property. How long, did we, did we only just started ten years ago collecting money? So, right?
No, sir. We've been paying every contract that we've had with you. We have paid the city.
So you, you've had previous contracts.
Yes, sir.
Up to, up to this, to two thousand and fifteen.
No.
Is that right?
Yes, sir. We've had a bench contract with the city for thirty, maybe forty years. The family business has had that contract, and.
Okay, so my, my next question is, so if it comes political time and, and we, I, I call Keith Haynes, I say, Keith, I need, I need a bench. And you say Joe Gombalabo called, and he says he bought every bench in your, your ward. You're, there're no- nothing's available. But, so the guy with the most money's gonna come in and buy those benches, right? Money talks?
Well, let me try to clarify from our standpoint. It's not the money. We charge everyone the same regardless, okay? So there's no different rates.
So no, no difference if I buy ten benches or one bench? You don't give me a discount if I buy ten?
There is a discount given by that, but what I mean is, uh, there's no discount given to one person versus another person, or a priority given to one person versus another. First call, first served.
Okay.
Assuming the benches are available, and many times they're not.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Uh, anybody else?
[laughing]
All right, seeing none. So this has been moved to debate. Do we need to pass a motion to send it to debate, or does it automatically go?
The motion's been made. All you need to do, if you have no more clarification, just vote.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? As habit, motion passes to debate.
Thank you.
Twenty twenty-five, one five four. An ordinance authorizing execution of agreement with the, uh, authorizing payment to the Lepmost U- US LP to provide employee training for leadership, personnel development, and compliance in the amount not to exceed twenty-seven thousand dollars from June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five through June twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-six for the Office of Human Resources.
Motion for consent.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Twenty twenty-five, one fifty-five. An ordinance authorizing execution of agreement with the Department of Commerce and Economic Opportunity for sponsorship in the amount of thirty-nine thousand five hundred and eighty-two dollars for a grant agreement, number twenty-five dash three-three-six zero-one-zero, to the Pharmacy Gallery and Art Space for the Bob Waldmeier Route Sixty-Six exhibit to be held May one, twenty twenty-five through December twentieth, twenty twenty-six for the Springfield Convention and Visitors Bureau.
Motion for consent.
Second.
Um, I'm gonna make a motion, I guess, uh, to hold this in committee.
I'll make that motion, Chair.
All right, thank you. Alderman Donlin.
May I ask why?
Um, I think Mr. Doll is here, he can discuss it.
I'm just making sure when it's in Ward Five, okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, I thought you, uh.
We're waiting on a companion ordinance for this, uh, for the actual grant agreement, and because this ordinance includes the grant agreement, we can't pass this before we get the grant agreement through, so.
Got you. I just didn't see you, and I saw him call in.
I got you, yeah. So if we hold in committee, we'll wait for the grant agreement. That's coming in first reading on the fifteenth, I believe, and then they'll.
Okay.
They'll work together at that point.
I heard you yelling "hold", I knew you either wanted to hold the ordinance or my hand.
Yeah, yeah. The ordinance.
Thank you.
So, Mr. Chairman, the substitute motion is, uh, to hold this in committee.
Yes, I believe by Mr. Donlin.
Use, your, your motion, second by Mr. Donlin.
Uh, very good. Um, any further discussion on that? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Twenty twenty-five, one fifty-six. An ordinance approving Addendum Seven to the agreement with the Springfield-Sangamon County Growth Alliance, formerly known as Land of Lincoln Economic Development Corporation, for the period beginning March one, twenty twenty-five, ending February twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-six, by authorizing an additional payment of two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars for a total amount not to exceed two million dollars for the Office of Planning and Economic Development.
Motion for debate.
Second.
Been moved and seconded for debate. Any discussion?
It's Ryan. Go ahead.
Go ahead. I, I, it's, I just can't see, is he?
Is he? I'm pretty sure she was gonna ask the same question, is he here?
Okay, oh, I'm sorry. So, uh, yeah, they're co- they're coming next week to speak on this.
Oh, very good.
Comment, that's it. Thank you, Chair.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you.
Um, all those in favor?
Wait, wait.
Whoop, oh, I'm sorry, this, yo, you just clicked in, you just clicked in. I'm trying to roll.
For your first time.
I learned from, I learned from Alderman Donlin, man, you just keep these things rolling.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I ain't gonna lie to you, now you're doing a good job.
Mr. Gregory, go ahead, thank you.
So I, I, you know, a few comments, and I won't get into everything. Uh, uh, I, I have great respect for Ryan and the thirty-eight members, um, that are part of the Sangamon County Growth Alliance, but out of those thirty-eight, there's only two people of color, and I have a problem with that. There is no way that we can deliver, when we go to Washington, DC, on the trip, who's delivering the message for black people, or people of color? I have a problem with that. I talked about this last year. Absolutely great job with Cap nineteen oh eight. Um, I spoke into Jennifer on some things in her ward, um, our Alderwoman, Nociano, I apologize, um, in, in her ward on that, you know, and, eh, I get what we're trying to do with this regional economic development thing, right? And, and, and I think our reason is strong, it will be strong, but, you know, w- when I look on here and I see, you know, collaboration with Bloomington, Normo, and Champagne, and the Tuscola, and all this craziness, you know, I, I, I just hope that we're not losing sight on building Springfield, on making sure that our small businesses in certain parts of our town, where we won't
in certain parts of our town, where we won't get large corporations to come, are thought about and helped, and make sure that their needs are priority as well. And, you know, I'll speak the rest with our Sangamon County Growth Alliance members if they want to speak. But I am prepared to bring amendment as well for a solution. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Alderman. Alderman Williams.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. And I wanna just diddle what you're saying. I appreciate your comments, Alderman Gregory. I do want them to explain the East Side Plan that Sangamon County Regional Planning has over there. I mean, it's a nice plan, but the Growth Alliance hasn't made no movement on it since twenty nineteen, I can say, when I got here, four years. So I think it's time to address Ryan, or whoever's gonna be doing the speaking for the Alliance, on when do we come in a picture besides this regional picture that they love and other things in Springfield, when the most place that needs the development is east? And that plan has been sitting on the books way before I became Alderman. So it's time to have that serious discussion on when are you gonna do that? And put something over there, or build something over there and go on and on? I mean, I fought it all. I fought the Frito-Lay. It went to Chatham, pretty much, but the edge of one, I guess. So, you know, they got that. Where I forgot the, the Amazon warehouse. And all I'm just wanting is, when are we going to address that plan? They know of the plan, and to me, that Regional Growth Alliance, I don't think my side of town has benefited. So I just, I'll be glad to meet, you know, have the discussion next week. Nothing against them. I went on the trip. He took us to a beautiful trip in Chicago. I saw a site about five times the size of Pillsbury. I saw what they did with that site. I saw what their community put on it and all that kind of stuff. So I'm interested to hear Pillsbury's ease. I'm interested to hear. So, thank you, guys.
Thank you. Alderwoman Purchase.
Thank you, Chair. I feel chatty today. But I'm a little frustrated because last year, everyone laughs when I ask this question about educating the community or coming to us at least one or two times a year to let us know what's going on. And I think a lot of the concerns would be, you know, it wouldn't be asked right now if that would have happened. So next week, we're gonna be sitting here trying to digest a lot that has taken place over a year. And I sat, and I was quiet, and I didn't see one presentation brought to us. But now we're gonna get a full presentation next Tuesday for concerns, and just talking about summaries of every project that's currently going on right now. So I'm hoping that Ryan, I'm sure he will see this tonight too as well, but when he comes to us, that maybe that can happen over the next year. You can come, and you can bring us what's going on and status updates of these projects too, instead of each of us just hitting him up at certain periods. We all wanna see this. This encompasses the whole entire city of Springfield. But I do understand the frustration in Wards Two and Three when you're not hearing of anything until it's time to approve additional two hundred and fifty thousand dollars into two million. Thank you.
You're welcome. Any further discussion? I believe there is a motion to put this ordinance on the debate agenda. Mr. Clerk, are you good with the motion in the second?
Yes.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. I believe that's the end of the ordinances, correct?
Yep.
Thank you. Next is unfinished business. Is there any unfinished business before the committee? Seeing, whoa, Mr. Clerk?
If I might be able to address something with Dave Fuchs. Director, you can stay there. I'm just gonna, I'm just gonna tell you. My office is on the northeast corner of this building. I overlook the intersection of Eighth and Monroe. This morning, I counted six cars driving wrong direction on Monroe Street and almost had a severe accident right in front of my office. The signage for people that are coming up Eighth Street to the south, towards Monroe, the no-turn sign is on the wrong side of the street. We need to address that, if you could, with your, with your traffic people, because it's a very dangerous intersection. And a lot of the employees that are coming out here are gambling their lives every time they cross that street to go to their cars. So if you would mind looking at that tomorrow, I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Alderman Carlson.
Along with that, Director Fuchs, is the no stoplight there at Eighth and Monroe, is this a temporary thing, as I remember, or is this a permanent thing now? Okay, thank you.
Any other unfinished business at this time? Very good. Next is new business. Any, is there any new business before the committee? Mr. Carlson, is that a new click? Nope, okay. Alderwoman Nottrion.
Thank you, Chair. I, you all should have in front of you an ordinance regarding a liquor license for emergency passage. I'm asking that you all would consider passing this next week. So it's supposed to be on the agenda for the following meeting, but the new owners of the real yard on Sixth Street would like to open on May first. And they'll lose a weekend or two if we don't put this on passage for this coming meeting. So just asking for your consideration there. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you. Alderwoman Conley.
Thank you, Chair. I just wanna say I saw on Instagram today that it is National Library Workers' Day, Appreciation Day, on top of, oh, there you are. I can't turn around. It's, and I'm thrilled for that. I don't know, do you have a minute just to come up and talk about kind of plans for the bookmobile? Or, I appreciate you so much. I can't tell who's sitting back here. It's a great place to hide from me. I'm not, I am not as well-versed, I'm not as well-skilled with social media, but I do, I did see that on Instagram. Your staff looked fabulous in the picture. And I just wanna say for my heart, they get appreciation all day long, all year long, but I'm glad they get a day too.
Thank you. Thank you. This is National Library Week. It started, let me see, I got my notes, April sixth, and it ends April twelfth. And today, I, we took a picture, a staff picture about nine o'clock, and then I, we enjoyed chocolate cake and cookies in the break room, and they were very appreciative of that.
That's the way to appreciate yourself.
So regarding the bookmobile, we want to launch it on June first, at the start of our summer reading program. But there are some hurdles that need to be crossed. We all have to get a Class C endorsement. Yeah, gotta learn how to navigate the air brake system and drive the vehicle. So there are some things that we need to do. There's more to it that I don't wanna bring before you guys, but there are some things that have to take place before we put it out there, so.
I'm glad that there, is everyone getting training, or?
Oh, yes.
Okay, so I'm glad to hear that. We want it to be safe while it's being driven. I know people are excited to see it. And again, please extend thanks and appreciation to all of your staff. And congratulations, National Library Week should be, we've got fifty-two of those.
I agree. I agree.
Thank you very much, Director.
Thank you, Director. Thank you, Alderwoman Conley, and Alderman Gregory.
And I'm gonna be real quick, and, you know, this is, I probably should say it in old business, but, you know, over the last six, eight months, you know, and I've, you know, recently, we've had some questions about the unhoused and things, and, you know, I have to say, over the last six months or so, I've worked with, these are the people that I've worked with. Ms. Renetta, Virginia, Nick Dotson, Mr. Ethan Posey, Shemika, Ms. Penny, Tiara, the Youth Service Bureau for a young man who was out in the rain at twelve and one o'clock at night. And as well as Ms. Leslie Scrooge, she delivered that call to me about this young man. So I just wanna say, you know, in the reference of unhoused people and things, that we, there is several others, and I'm sure several others that I didn't mention. But anytime that I've called any one of these people, including people who are getting out of prison, returning citizens, I'm sending that information to them, and they're looking at it. They're handling it. So, you know, as far as funding, we always can use more. But there is some individuals, Shannon Allen, I don't wanna forget her as well, that are working hard day and night, pulling up to the place. And I've been there with them. I try not to say their names and stuff, because they don't want the credit. They don't wanna be bragged on. We just wanna continue to do the work. But these calls come in daily from people who are suffering. I compliment the mayor. She's approved several sets of funding to help people who didn't have lights, eighty-something years old, sending their house. Call Laheep, all the way from nineteenth. She don't have heat right now. So some calls is made, and they got the handle. So I just wanna compliment the many, many people who are working with our unsheltered and people who are just falling upon hard times in general, who even have a house. Good work. Keep it up. We got a tough task on us. And that doesn't mean that, you know, we won't adjust and do things. But I do see plenty, plenty, plenty of people working, you know, from the shelter and everything. I know people from, you know, from the streets that take them jobs overnight. Nobody else wants to take those jobs. It's rough. So, you know, and this conversation comes from somebody who really cares. And, you know, they called me, and, you know, they feel like, you know, the city don't stick up for them enough in the hard work that they do. And, you know, I told them that I definitely would speak up for them, because I definitely know the hard work that they do do, day in and day out, off the clock, and all types of craziness. So the work is there, but like I said before, the better we get at it, the more people are gonna seek us out for help, and that is a good thing. It makes us work harder, but it is a good thing. So I appreciate everyone, and I just wanted to say that. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. Alderwoman Conley.
Thank you. I think, actually, Alderman Gregory, thank you for that. I think it's really important. We recognize there's some really good people doing good work. But you also mentioned Laheep, and Laheep has been in the news recently. And I think, and I don't wanna belabor it right now. I think as a topic of future conversation, we have a municipally-owned utility. I think we can reasonably expect that there are gonna be some gaps in service for Laheep. And I would just like to say, for Doug Brown, for the mayor, for this council, I think we need to start having a conversation about where we as a city, you know, can we find ways to fill some of those holes that I think we're going to be seeing with what's being done at the federal level to Laheep?
Absolutely.
Very concerned about that. That's a critical service. And like you just said, having no power last night would have been really cold. And we know that that is the way that we, where we send most people. And I think it's not been something that the city has taken on before, but this is a conversation we need to start having, because there are gaps being created, and we need to, we need to see what we can do to fill those.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Alderman, for bringing up Laheep. I was in the, it was in my head, but thank you for that. So just, not for tonight. That's not, not to make a decision tonight, but I think that we as a council, we as a municipal utility, need to start looking into this and consider what we can do to work with our, to protect our residents. So, thank you.
Thank you, Alderwoman Conley. Any further new business? Seeing none, it is now time for the citizens to address the committee. Do we have any citizens to address the committee?
We do, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
First person is Ronald Hamm.
Hiya. My name is Ronald Hamm. I am speaking to you today as the quite unfortunate technology coordinator of the Lincoln Land DSA. And today, I would like to talk to you about socialism, which is a tricky thing. If you ask five socialists what socialism is, they'll collectively give you eleven contradictory answers. The DSA defines socialism as "a system where ordinary people have a real voice in our workplaces, neighborhoods, and society." Harry Truman said in nineteen fifty-two that socialism is the name for almost anything that helps all the people, from social security to farm price supports, to bank deposits, to insurance labor unions. Professor of economics at the University of Massachusetts Amherst, Richard Wolff, has claimed that an enterprise only qualifies as socialist once the distinction between employers and employees within it has been abolished. I don't like any of those explanations. A couple of them are vague. A couple of them don't align with socialist goals. Most importantly, none of it is actionable. So instead, I will posit this definition. Socialism is cooperative government operation that works towards the collective good of all people. Two things there: cooperative government operation and collective good of all people. Let's go over both of them. Cooperative government operation, simply put, means more people participating in and having a say in government. We can imagine this as a slider, where on one extreme end, one person makes all the decisions about government for everyone, and on the other end, everyone participates in government and makes their own decisions for themselves. Something we see throughout history is that, over time, human societies have had more people in power. Human societies have gone from having one king to having a royal family, to having a system of dukes and barons, to having something like democracy, as long as you're a rich white landowner. So more like an oligarchy, really. And here in America and around the world, we've been expanding that further. Not only is every man and woman guaranteed the right to vote through two constitutional amendments, as long as they haven't been incarcerated, but every person is, at least hypothetically, insured a right to be employed by the government or representative of the government. Point being, cooperative government is not, is something that we've already been doing and a direction we've already been moving in as far back as human memory stretches. Collective good of all people is a bit harder to nail down due to things being so unimaginably cataclysmically horrible. It's not a matter of figuring out what to do. It's a matter of figuring out what to do first. Let me give you a real simple example. Unhoused people. Everyone agrees that we want to help unhoused people, but how? Well, they have basic needs like food and clothing and shelter. One person can help another person with those things on an individual level, at least temporarily. They have secondary needs, official identification, communication and internet access, access to physical and mental health care. Those are things that can be individualized, but they require broader systems in order to function. One person can't just do that for another person. You have broader territorial concerns, like if someone in Peoria decides to pass a "Throw All the Unhoused People in Jail" ordinance. That's a problem that not only affects all unhoused people, but lots of other people too. You can't just solve that for one person. The only way to solve that problem is to solve it collectively. And how do you prioritize these things? It's hard. Even for capable groups, it's hard, but you've gotta do it. Everyone in this room is closer to being unhoused than they are to being Elon Musk. While it seems daunting, there are things we can do and have been moving in the direction of doing as a society. Vitally, these two things are not things to be done or not done. Cooperation, collective good, and socialism are not switches that you turn on and off. They are gradients. They never, they are never really finished. We're just moving more or less in the direction of these things. In the same way, mastery of a skill is never finished. And maybe that sounds imposing, but there are real ways we could move more in the direction of socialism. We could have more robust public transport system, more and better buses, more and better trains, more and better sidewalks. We could have more robust public housing, including expanding low-barrier housing options. More could be done by the city to improve food security. For example, instead of merely hosting farmers' markets, the city could subsidize them. You could expand school lunches and have lunch days at the library or here at City Hall, for instance. We could give some, any resources to the East Side. Please. People are literally dying over there, and it took a year to figure out how to get their clothes washed when one of the people over here, this man, Robert Facher, was saying he would do it for free? Some members of the city council threatened to shut down a group explicitly working to prevent youth violence due to a technicality in their funding? Why? But why, though? And shame on the Ralphs who agreed in favor, who argued in favor of those decisions. Things are terrible right now. I know it, and these people know it. The people watching know it, and I'm sure all of you know it. But they don't have to be this way. If we work towards a common good, maybe we can make things better for all of us. Thank you for your time. Thank you.
Aaron Cahill.
I got goodies for y'all. Should be one dog-eared for each of you and one for the mayor.
Good, thank you.
Absolutely.
Is there a reason why time's already started?
I think as soon as you approach the podium, the time...
I literally just got here.
I don't know, sir. I wouldn't waste anymore, though. Hold on.
No problem. All right, appreciate it. The right to free speech in the First Amendment has been around as long as the country has been an independent nation. Many people fought and died for this right, while other countries continue to try and have the same freedoms as we do. as we do. Currently, people are being denied access to our country for act exercising their rights of free speech. And much like Trump's goon squad, limiting the access of free speech, examples of this act continue to happen in our own city council, cutting off people's microphones, moving camera angles, zooming in or away from certain peoples, uh, people are all examples of obstructing freedom of speech. In Cohen v. California, Cohen, a nineteen-year-old worker, was imprisoned for thirty days for wearing a shirt that said F the draft, stop the war. In an opinion by Justice John Marshall Harlan, the court reasoned that the expletive, while provocative, was not directed toward anyone. Besides, there was no evidence that people in substantial numbers would be provoked into some kind of physical action by the words on his jacket. Harlan recognized that one man's vulgarity is another man's lyric. In doing so, the court protected two elements of speech, the emotive, the expression of emotion, and the cognitive, the expression of idea. Much like Count Cohen, the city council continues to ban people for thirty days for using expressions of emotions or ideas. As Alder Notrano said, we are going to get sued. This country is being torn apart enough that we do not need to attack our own citizens because of them exercising their constitutional rights. Mayor Busher, your people are scared, and they are angry.
Address the chair. Come on, man. Right here.
Let this not be the hill we choose to fight, as there are many other hills before, deadlier hills before us. Furthermore, the FCC does not control YouTube. That was a false statement put out on the radio the other day. I just want to make sure everybody is aware of that. The FCC has nothing to do with YouTube. That being said, twenty twenty-seven, I'll be running for mayor. Y'all have a great night.
Thank you, sir.
Ken Pasha.
I want to first recognize Ms. Polito here. Shout out to you, Ms. Rosanna Polito. You and I don't agree politically, but her free speech rights were violated by this very council. And I think what's interesting about things like that is the ACLU, you mentioned it, because I got a little bit here to talk about, because I think the thing is, is arbitrary rules. I think one of the things that I've found with authority figures that aren't very comfortable with their authority is they make up rules as they go along, to suit their needs, to fit their desires, and to limit the people they'd like to limit. That's what we've been watching happen here, because just like with Ms. Polito here, you guys forced her to turn her shirt around or inside out with no legal basis for that restriction. One of the big problems with that is there's no rules. You have no written rules besides a very limited basis, and despite that very charming OMA presentation, your guys' rules are extremely limited, very vague, unclear, and have no real outlines regarding the things you're trying to restrict. There's no QR code restriction, but according to Counselor Mordock here, we make decisions all the time we don't put out in public. It was not an issue, and nobody came to us and asked if we circulated it beforehand. Is this a rule or a thought you had? See, the thing is, is rules are codified. The police don't arrest me off guesswork. They arrest me off laws that were written, voted on, and placed into law, right? So where exactly does the council decide that you're just going to arbitrarily make things up as you go along, as it suits you? Because the problem is, is what's coming out of this city is coming from different directions, in different ways, and different justifications on the same topics. And you know what inconsistency leads to when it comes from authority? Makes it sound like you're making it up, because you are. And that's the crazy part, because let's reference yet another radio show by the mayor. I'm addressing the chair right now. But quite frankly, when our mayor goes on air and says things like we are assigned with protecting our citizens, such as with the QR code, it could be hacked. Well, one, it can't be hacked live. That's physically impossible. Two, the city puts QR codes out on your Facebook page, multiple posts. Anybody worried about quishing those? Or we just worried about quashing free speech? Because that's what it sounds like to me, considering that was a two-week-in-a-row issue, and nobody came to the person that asked about it. In fact, one of our own aldermen testified that he had okayed it, showed it to you guys, and you all okayed it. And then the word came down from somebody, which would be our mayor, let's be clear, it took a newspaper article to suss that one out. Um, because the thing is, is our mayor said that the reason the QR code came up is because of her concerns about quishing from a book she'd read regarding malware, spyware, and things like that. She stated, and has been noted in the paper, that it was people asked here at Nick Dodson and Don Hanrahan who came forward with the QR code. There were no laws placed in, there was no rules put in. You have no rulebook for the rules you're citing. You have no basis for the punishments you're handing out, other than arbitrary guesswork. That is a failure of leadership. Make no mistake, do you go to work and your boss just makes things up as he goes along? Is that acceptable for anybody? I'm almost a hundred percent sure it's not. So I'm just curious why here at city council, that seems to be the acceptable way of operating. Because I'll be quite frank, you want this to end? Me, too. It's embarrassing explaining the childlike and petty games that get played in this council by elected officials. You run a city. You don't have to like me, but I am your constituent, and so is everyone else that comes to speak here. And when our mayor goes on a radio show and calls us democratic socialists, or says we're not the kind of people she would hang out with, or talk to, or listen to, that's a lot coming from somebody in charge of our city. I'm not going to have time to cover all this, but the softball interviews that happen on Sam Madonia's radio show are starting to get a little bit ridiculous. As a broadcaster, we need to stop naming him as a broadcaster and call him an entertainer, like we do wrestling, because it ain't real journalism. Because quite frankly, with the softball policies and questions that are happening, it's astounding that with no official policies written anywhere, which is definitely not how cities are supposed to operate, you guys hand out bans based off of whose guesswork? We know whose, the mayor's. That's who controls the communication department. It's not Haley Wilson moving those cameras, and it ain't anybody else shutting off those mics. It's your mayor directing them. So be clear about that when you guys are wondering why I keep bringing it to your attention, because the mayor doesn't want to meet with us or talk to us. You're the only ones listening. So that's kind of a problem in itself, but I think it's really frustrating when people say things like, you know, it's not a big deal, we've got more pressing matters than to worry about the people that are coming to speak to the council about their concerns about their community. If this council had been listening to this community over the last thirty years, my neighborhood wouldn't look like it did. We wouldn't have to hear about how neglected the East Side is. But that's what's been happening here. You guys want to play petty games with us and say that we're abusive, harassing-
All right, thank you.
-and using foul language, but quite frankly-
Thank you, Mr. Pasha.
...is, is the most offensive part-
Thank you, sir. We're done. We're-
Thank you, boy.
You were here earlier when we discussed the five-minute rule.
Yeah, I was here earlier, and I heard it just fine.
Ken, Ken, Ken.
You talk to me like a child, Jeff. You're an adult. How much you speak like an alderman to a constituent instead of a child in your living room?
Point of order, point of order.
You treat us with respect.
Point of order.
No, that's not how this works.
Point of order.
There's a point of order.
Point of order.
You're the one-
Point of order.
-conscription of authority.
Ken.
Extend the respect you want.
Paesin.
I started nicely, sir. I'm asking you to stop now. Thank you.
Barbal Cures Heine. Ms. Heine, we are going to broadcast your your QR code alongside you on the screen. Uh, you did send that to us, and we did approve that, okay?
Thank you.
Her mic's not on.
What's not?
Her mic's still showing the red ring. There we go.
Thank you. So I would like to start with a moment of silence for the fifteen healthcare workers that were murdered by the Israel government two weeks ago. Haomi Afaskawi, a journalist burnt alive, one of the two hundred and thirty-two journalists killed by Israel genocide. The little boy Hamza Abu Isa decapitated by the IOF bombs. A fourteen-year-old boy killed throwing rocks. A Palestinian-American, Omar Mohammed Rabea. All of this happened this past weekend. All lives murdered in Palestine, Yemen, Syria, and Lebanon. What is the meaning of quishing, people ask? Quishing, short for QR code phishing, is an identity fraud scam utilizing QR codes. Scammers post physical images of QR codes in high-traffic locations and send them via email or text message. Quishing scam example is, you'll find QR codes everywhere, from parking machines and charging points, to emails or restaurant menus. Scammers want you to scan their code instead of the real one. The link will go to a fake website to capture the personal or banking details. You may not know, you'll be scammed until later. This is what came out of our mayor's radio station that they were protecting us from. What that meant is whoever's holding the QR code is a scammer. So you saw me as a scammer, but not Nick Dodson? I find it really disingenuous from the mayor and the communication team to say that these are standard practices, the moving of the cameras, the cutting of the mics. If that was the case, a common sense thing to do would have been to stop me after my speech and announce a new process the first or the second time I came to speak. What did the Corporation Council and Alderman Hanauer allow it the first time? Do you, do they not know? Even if that was the case, what would have, I mean, you would have noticed it was me. No one reached out to me to, except for this time that I signed up to speak. A request. Am I going to use a QR code? To send it to be approved, to Judge Joanna? I hope that everyone got that same sign or the same email, because it feels targeted. I work alone with DCFS advocating for kids to receive SSI, SSI benefits all statewide. I am a parent, I am a mother, I am a daughter, I am human. I am your constituent. Advocacy comes natural to me. Advocacy for the ones that I can't no longer use their voice. Advocacy for those who are stopped by fear. It disappoints me, the lack of empathy for your constituents. All these proclamations every other week, except for the one that your city asked you for. All this messing with the cameras, rushing people out. I was even beginning to think that Haley Wilson was like some made-up person, but they confirmed she's a real person. And then again, I realized, who is the employer? City clerk, the mayor. People ask me, what does it, the petition of Mohammed Khalil had to do with, uh, his release, has to do with the city of Springfield? Everything. We are all intertwined. He has committed no crime. He has used his voice to help raise awareness on how our government is sending our tax money to fund the ethnic cleansing genocide of his family, his friends, his community, his people. I saw something that said, but Gaza has nothing to do with us. ICE and our cops are training Israel. Ninety percent of our Congress receives donations from pro-Israel lobby. Republicans and Democrats are AIPAC-funded. Israel gets our tax money more than any other country, and it has killed more kids than any other ally. Our government is passing laws to shut down criticism of Israel, yet I can say whatever about America, but America first. Nearly thirty states prevent us from receiving public contracts if we boycott Israel. Even the TikTok ban was a shift to, for public opinion. Gaza, Palestine, has everything to do with us. Note that those people that are committing the genocide are coming home here. In eighteen years from now, when my child asked me, what did I do when this genocide took place in Palestine, Congo, Sudan, the bombing of Yemen, announcing a Signal chat group, I would tell him, I used my voice. We learned to not let fear silence us. We learned how to build community. We learned how to empower the people. Here are some Bruce Lee's posts that I've been using. Maybe it'll help you. Instead of buying your children the things you never had, teach them the things you never thought. Materials wears down, but not knowledge. Knowing is not enough, we must apply. Willing is not enough, we must do. I am not a religious person-
I dislike religion.
Thank you, ma'am.
But still, three Palestine, three Sudan, three Congo. Not in my name.
Tamika Seymour.
Good evening, y'all. Today, my name is Tamika Seymour. I've been at home relaxing, watching city council, and I appreciate what I've been seeing. People know me as Tamika. I'm Republican, but I vote for Democrats, some of my friends that's in office. Why do the public have more leeway than Democrats? What we're going to talk about today is, we're talking about freedom of speech. How many times I've been in the city council, and we all are citizens in this, in Springfield, that I seen aldermen fight against each other, mayors arguing with the city council, and nothing happened to y'all. Y'all get to go holler, yell, scream at each other, but nothing happened to y'all. A lady come up here speaking her mind. People is not like y'all. We, if she came up here threatening y'all, yes, she should be barred. But if she came up here speaking the way she know how to speak, y'all should have accepted. She didn't use no foul language. The language she used was in the dictionary. Every cuss word is in the dictionary. It's a way that you talk to people. If you talk to people with respect, it's a good thing. But if she came up and yelling and screaming disrespectful things and using it as a threat, yes, bar her. But if you're going to bar somebody, bar them for something right. She didn't do nothing wrong, nothing but speak her mind. And every word that she used came out the dictionary, and she should not be punished for that. If it, therefore, if she's punished, how many times all y'all aldermen went at each other? Why is y'all not punished? Y'all should be not be able to speak if y'all cussing, yelling and screaming, threatening each other. I seen that. But now when y'all got punished, and y'all up here, what I'm asking y'all to do is bring her back in here, ask her a question or two, and ask her what she was trying to get across. If she was trying to get something across respectfully, take her off the bar list. But if she sit up there, was up here aggressive to y'all, keep her on the bar list. I think y'all deserve her apology. I'm done.
Brianna Roberts.
If the rules aren't public, consistent, or fairly applied, they're not rules, they are means of control. Fundamental rights and freedoms are the backbones of this nation. I don't appreciate being the topic of conversation on radio stations when I don't get the ability to defend myself or share my side. We've reached a point where the acts of our city council meetings are not only troubling, but they are inconsistent, unjust, and have the potential to undermine the integrity of our rights. We just need them to act like professional adults when addressing the chamber. I don't think expecting normal citizens to hold ourselves to a different standard than our council members are being held makes sense. I think going on a radio station and speaking poorly of your constituents is not an act of professionalism. But what do I know, right? I'm one of them people. But let me just say, I am also a woman in leadership, and I don't feel like I'm being brought up by the city. She's mad because while she was speaking, her microphone cut out, and because her microphone cut out, we gave her extra time. Again, I don't appreciate being spoken for, so let me explain to you guys why I was upset. I was mad because each broadcasting microphone is not connected to itself. So if it was just the chamber microphones that went out, it should have just been the chamber microphones. Not every live stream should have been muted. But it was, one microphone went out, then the rest of the microphones went out, and then I was muted on YouTube and all of the other broadcasting live streams. That's not an accident, and I still have not gotten any answers. I was mad because we are told, my communication director sent out rules in, uh, summer of last year. Let's be consistent and all follow them, which is immediately followed by, and I quote, "If they choose to follow the rules, great. If they don't, that's prerogative, or that's their prerogative." Now imagine if we took that belief and applied it to the world out- Now imagine if we took that belief and applied it to the world outside of this room. What do you think would happen if we just said, well, we have these rules, but if they follow them, eh, whatever? The world would be a mess, and so is city council, because we don't all follow the same rules. It's deeply troubling that this conversation has been taken to radio stations and being debriefed there when there hasn't even been a chance for face-to-face conversation. Retroactive enforcement is enforcing a rule that did not exist, and then quietly creating a rule after community members have already received punishment. This is what we witnessed recently with the QR code censorship. We're told that this happened immediately last year after the Sierra Club came up here with a QR code, but there was no documentation, there was no access to this rule. So how are we being held accountable for not knowing something that we don't know? This violates the core principles of open government and transparency. In Springfield, in America, the public deserves to sustain the right to be heard, and city council has a duty to make these decisions transparently. Administrative overreach without input from council and community is not just unethical, but it violates open government best practices. We've witnessed sitting members of the council yell "Bull S H I T" and receive no punishment, not even a reprimand in the middle of the meeting, but somebody off microphone who is already muted, well, technically because their time was over, gets a ban. If we're gonna have rules, they need to apply to everybody because you guys are no different than us. The deliberate switching of camera angles, which I do wanna note, we are now back to the forward-facing camera, so whoever's in charge of that, because I know they're not in this room, thank you. This isn't just about obscuring reactions, this is about censorship, viewpoint censorship. It only happens to a, it's, when there's public comment, when you are afraid, there's certain people that come here weekly, come up here and share an opinion that might not be overwhelmingly agreed with, with some members on the board, but you have other members of organizations come up here and the camera's facing them forward, but as soon as it's us, it's a side-facing camera. That's viewership, or that's viewship censorship. I just wanna ask city council, if you're gonna vote for our rights in these rules, keep our rights in your mind when you make new rules. Thank you.
Paige Mathis.
Before I begin with what I planned, um, can you ask if Corporation Council will have that presentation posted online alongside the agenda items, because it's not currently listed, and it was really hard to read?
Oh, is that possible, Mr. Corporation Council?
Yeah, presentations are put up on the, on the city clerk's website, so that should be available to the public.
Okay, it wasn't.
It's not posted yet.
They're not posted yet?
We'll make sure that it gets up there, um, along with the minutes, as they usually go up after a meeting.
Okay.
Thank you.
While the city of Springfield has perpetuated physical manifestations of violence without question, I would like to address the psychological systemic and epistemic violence currently being inflicted. The psychological violence being inflicted on the East Side is a result of inaction. There are no deeds done in true neutrality, as physics tells us, each action has an equal and opposite reaction. As you try to force the facade of being an egalitarian and nonpartisan being, reality pushes back. You say you are working on development, but the 2,900 Public Works requests push back. You say you care about community, but the lack of nine-tenths of the council attending our health fair pushes back. You say you wanna work with us, but you cut the mic when you get too much pushback. The abuses of the power dynamics at play don't come without consequence. What are you telling residents of the East Side, not with word, but in action? You are telling them they are not good enough, no, not worthy enough of your attention. You tell them they aren't important. You victimized and blame them for exhibiting symptoms of a disease which you helped spread rather than eradicate poverty? Not only does the system, whose operation you aid, damage the psyche, it withhold, it withholds the resources needed to fix this ailment. How do you expect the 186 students to get accepted into higher education if you take away scope and force them to be their own parents? You don't. Children are way smarter than we give them credit for, and they can tell when they're being treated differently. If you've been taught the purpose of your life is to willingly submit or submit by force, what difference does abiding by rules make if the outcome is the same? You make so many objections to our directions of you, but the moment you acquiesce to sliver of your values, you gave yourself to the abstract machine for which we have no face to sneer at, so you will have to do. Nonetheless, you really are the people you spend the most time with, and since it is not us, the community, we must address you as a singular entity devoid of individual nuance and complexity, except for a few. Should you begin to uphold the values you claim to, begin with an honesty so fierce we cannot help but acknowledge your individuality? Mental conformity and physical rigidity restrain the marginalized groups of Springfield into intellectual atrophy. The people are too tired to eat, too hungry to sleep, and too preoccupied to speak. Epistemic violence is a term created by the theorist Geordi Spivak to describe the harm done to marginalized groups when they are silenced, misrepresented, or unheard. Spivak was referring to a native group of Indians under British colonial rule, the subaltern. But I bet Springfield citizens find these tribulations familiar. Geordi concludes the subaltern cannot speak, which is better understood as the subaltern will not be heard. Will you stop the violence and begin to hear? The unhoused want help and their autonomy. The addicted want help, but how can they afford rehab without insurance? The children want to learn, but who has the time to teach them? The teachers want to teach, but they work sixteen unpaid hours every weekend. You silence us, represent us, and refuse to hear, so let me be clear, what goes around comes around. Tighten up.
Lori McKernan.
Last November, city council passed an ordinance for C W L P's new contract with Deer Run Mine in Hillsborough to buy coal for Dalman Four and to transport some of the coal combustion byproducts, the CCBs, back to Deer Run Mine from Dalman Four. Deer Run Mine currently does not have approval to store CCBs at their mine, however, they do have an open permit with the IDNR to accept this coal waste from Dalman Four. Deer Run Mine also has a permit under review by the IDNR to expand the height of the banks of their coal slurry impoundment from sixty-five feet to a hundred feet. CCBs are often used in making concrete and for soil stabilization, and it's assumed that Deer Run will use the CCBs from C W L P to do the expansion of those coal slurry impoundment walls. The coal slurry, which is the result of the mining process, that coal slurry that's stored in the impoundment, has heavy metals and other toxic contaminants. CCBs, which are the byproduct of burning the coal, contain contaminants like mercury, cadmium, and arsenic. Without proper management, these contaminants can pollute waterways, groundwater, drinking water, and the air. So this Deer Run impoundment has toxic waste both in the walls from our CCBs and in the coal slurry stored within it. The risk in modern coal slurry dams is in seepage and the weakness in the walls of the dam. In 1972, three coal slurry dams in West Virginia failed, dumping 130 million gallons of slurry into the Buffalo Creek, killing 125 people, injuring over 1,100 people, and leaving 4,000 people homeless. In 2000, in Martin County, Kentucky, a slurry impoundment broke into the mine just below it, and an estimated 306 million gallons of slurry poured into the mine, out of the mine's openings, and dumping into a nearby river. More recently, in 2008, now this is a coal ash impoundment spill in Kingston, Kentucky. That structure was over sixty feet tall and covered eighty-four acres. When it failed, it released 1.1 billion gallons of hazardous waste that covered 300 acres. So that was sixty feet tall on eighty-four acres. The Deer Run Mine, if approved, will be 100 feet high at 285 acres. So this structure at Deer Run Mine is considered a high-hazard dam because a breach and release of the slurry could cause damage to property and potential harm or loss of life. This impoundment is across a field that's just half a mile from homes in the area. This proximity to residential areas makes the magnitude of what the mine proposes highly significant. I'm bringing this up tonight because of our contribution to the expansion of this high-hazard dam by the transportation of our CCBs to the mine. IDNR is holding a formal hearing tomorrow night in Hillsborough about the expansion of these impoundment walls. This is the last opportunity for the public to voice their opinion on this permit. So to clarify, Deer Run Mine has two active IDNR permits in the approval process for their coal slurry impoundment. The permit for accepting the delivery of CCBs from Dalman Four, it's classified as insignificant for some reason, and will not have a public hearing and zero input from the public before approval. The original permit application for the expanded impoundment walls scheduled for tomorrow night's IDNR hearing was submitted prior to the contract with C W L P, so it doesn't address how they'll manage the CCBs from our power plant. That section of the application is blank. I'll be speaking tomorrow night at the IDNR hearing opposing this permit because without proper management, these contaminants can pollute waterways, groundwater, drinking water. Because of the lack of documentation on handling the CCBs, IDNR should deny the permit to expand the impoundment walls or require Deer Run Mine to rewrite the application to include the handling of the CCBs from C W L P. So this hearing tomorrow night is at the Montgomery County Farm Bureau building in Hillsborough at 5:30 PM, and speakers can sign up at the hearing. Thank you.
Thank you. Brianna Eilers.
Nice to see you again. Um, okay, so, Sean, you mentioned the unhoused and thanking the people. I'm sorry, I'm sorry, my bad. Okay, I appreciate, thank you for correcting me. Okay, Mr. Chair, Sean had thanked a whole bunch of people for working with the unhoused, and I also wanna thank those people for doing what they're doing because they do need to be thanked, and I appreciate that. However, I do wanna say it's not enough. Uh, and the reason why I say it's not enough is because if it was enough, we wouldn't have people complaining about unhoused populations. Um, okay, so with that being said, I kinda wanna piggyback on what Bree had said about the, um, the radio talk show, whatever, um, since, you know, I was also mentioned in that. Um, so, it, it was stated that, um, that somebody had gone to Houston, Texas, and there was a, there was so many unhoused population peoples in Houston, Texas. Well, yeah, that's because it's in Austin, Texas, the community-first village that I was, the tiny homes, um, that village is located in Austin, Texas. It has diminished the unhoused population in Austin, Texas by almost half. By next year, they are expecting it to be completely gone. They have an 88% retention rate, which I can't do math, so I don't know, but that's less than twenty in my brain. So, uh, in my opinion, that's, that's a win. There, there's no loss there. People are housed, they have their own space, they take care of their own space because of the fact that they have their own space. There's an 88% retention rate because the 12%, look at that, I did math, uh, the 12% that are able to stay there, they're still, they have other places to go. They go to the shelters, they have other options. But the people who aren't able to make it in a shelter, the people who aren't able to handle other people being around them, the people who need their own space in order to process their own thoughts, they do great in the community-first village. I've sent it to Jennifer, and I've sent it to Erin. If anybody else would be interested in this program, I would love to send it to you. I'm not going to bother sending it to Gregory or Williams because their wards cannot sustain it. Because I am a realist. Unlike some people think I do have some brain cells. Okay, as for the OMA presentation, I thought it was kind of crazy that my name was mentioned. You could have just put in there that, you know, that you got it from the Attorney General. So I appreciate the additional publicity, considering I will be sitting in a political seat at some point in my lifetime, so thank you for that. Um, and, uh, I am concerned about the fact that a bench gets more consideration for free speech than we do. We sat here for forty-five minutes minimum, minimum. Guys, I have ADHD. Do you understand how hard it is to sit through forty-five minutes of a bench talk? Bitches! You sit on them. Why isn't SMTD just doing it already? Doesn't make any sense. Why are we putting signs on these benches whenever literally poor people have to go there literally all the time? And why is there only one name being put on these benches all of the freaking time? Just guys, for real, just please, focus on poor people for once. I don't care about benches. I care about food and clothing and necessities. Thank you.
Robert Fraser.
I look forward to being banned since I yelled.
Robert Fraser.
Just, uh, just looking at some data, uh, I'm constantly doing the data thing and trying to find out what's going on in the community. But it shows that the city of Springfield has a population of about 111,374 people. Our total in the county and the city would be about 192,171. We have a very high poverty population right here in Springfield, and we represent 58% of the total population. Still, I found out some additional information about the health division of, um, public health. And little to be known to me, and finding out really surprises me, that Sangamon County in Springfield, position of, uh, money and obligated dollars to the tune of 1.94 billion dollars for this community right here, healthcare, in this state is number four. There's 102 counties in this state. I bet nobody really knew that. It shocked me that there's that much money in this area for healthcare obligations from the state of Illinois. As you're looking to find solutions for poverty, traumatized people, crime, and more, pay attention to simple solutions, like everybody's been talking about. Basic needs is what people really need. We're gonna find some people that have never had that need before, as they lose their federal jobs and different things, downsides are being met, they're gonna need some of those special, uh, basic needs. As we, this will go a long way to solving our day-to-day frustrations, survival, and understanding what's actually happening in the community. As we find, this is the month of March. Sixty-five hundred people in our community represents over a hundred, pretty close to 130,000 loads of laundry that we assisted the community with. It's not something that I asked for, not really what I signed up for, but this is what we're doing, and we expect this, this will increase to about 10,000, uh, a month, 10,000 people a month, which will increase that even more as far as the loads of laundry that If you talk to, uh, most people, we talk about the word sustainability. Poverty too is not sustainable. So we have to make the investment in people. We make a lot of investment around here in infrastructure and things that help us, uh, you know, get along. But as we talk about the 18,388 people in Springfield that are considered in poverty, probably about a one, I'm gonna give it a thousand, they're probably overdoing it, maybe 1,500, are unhoused. They're on the street or are living in shelters. That represents 17,000-plus people that are living, utilizing part of this program, as our numbers say. The people that utilize this program are about three to three and a half people per household, and their income is under a hun, under a thousand dollars a month. How, how does one live that way with three people? How, how does one live that way with three people? I think that, uh, I know this is a, a difficult situation and it's hard to navigate through, so in most cases, we just don't do anything, uh, because it is just something that, uh, requires a lot of effort. And I agree with you, but we're doing our part to help. And I look forward to some dialogue. It would be nice to be able to sit down with, uh, some of the decision-makers like you all and be able to work through some of these things that make sense. Because I certainly don't wanna be banging my head up against a wall for no reason at all. But thank God I live by faith and not by sight, and I'm doing what I'm, I'm giving, what I've been given to give. Thank you very much.
That's all the speakers, Mr. Chairman.
All right, thank you, Mr. Clerk.
I just wanna say something.
Are not signed up.
Is there a need for executive session?
No need for executive session.
Aye. No, no executive session.